Many urban communities. Under the CRA, banks need to show regulators that they're giving out loans to individuals and businesses near their branches, which can result in more lending in areas that might not otherwise get it. Regulators want to update the law to take online and mobile banking into account. Under the new rules, banks would be assessed on how they're serving low-income customers in communities where they provide a large numbers of loans, even if those loans are mostly offered online. Banking groups argue the updates go too far and could disincentivize banks from lending in certain areas, and they also say that the agencies proposing the new rules overstepped their authority. The banking groups, along with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, sued in February. The judge's ruling means the new regulations won't take effect while that lawsuit plays out. I'm Henry Epp for Marketplace.
There is not enough water in the Colorado River for people to keep using it as they have been, not with drought, climate change, and population growth. That much is clear. The federal government, seven southwestern states, and 30 tribal nations are working on long-term agreements on how to divide and conserve that water. One of the main targets for cuts is agriculture. In a recent study in the scientific journal Communications, Earth, and Environment shows just how much of the river's water goes to agriculture compared to use in cities. Marketplace's Savannah Marr has more.
Nearly three-quarters of the water diverted from the Colorado River is being used for irrigation, according to the study.
So this is not water that's used for living in the desert, it's for generating money?
Andrew Curley is a professor of geography at the University of Arizona. He says farmers in the basin have over 100 years of legal and physical water infrastructure on their side.
It's been a longstanding project that both the federal government and state governments to use Colorado River for irrigation, for agriculture.
But Curley says they've been allocating water based on faulty science. Now, overuse is catching up with the basin, and drier days are coming. Sarah Porter with the Kyle Center for Water Policy says farms and ranches will have to make painful cuts to their water use.
You're talking about farmers not being able to grow as much, potentially really impacting rural economies.
Porter says officials in the basin are looking for ways to leave water in the system without putting farmers out of business. I'm Savannah Marr for Marketplace.
All right, let's do the numbers. Dow futures are down 25 points at about 10th of a percent. S&amp;P futures are up a 10th of a percent. Nasdaq futures are up two-tenths of a percent.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by Disney. On April 3, Disney will be hosting its annual meeting of shareholders. Learn more about how to vote, along with the list of all Disney nominees, at votedisney.com. And by Odoo, focused on providing all-in-one, open-source business management software with fully integrated applications for every business need. More at Odoo.com. And by C3 Generative AI. Verified, traceable answers, secure, hallucination-free, LLM-agnostic, IP-liability-free. Learn more at c3.ai.
Some U.S. public school districts are considering closing and consolidating schools due to enrollment declines that accelerated during the COVID-19 pandemic. That's as a new Cato Institute survey shows that 46% of private schools reported increases in their number of students over the 2022, the 2023 school year. It is all part of a tricky tug-of-war over student enrollment that ultimately impacts district finances. Marketplace's Elizabeth Troval has more.
Four years after students were sent home from public schools during the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, the kids are still not all right. Stanford University's Tom D.
We observe historic learning loss. There are multiple indicators of serious deterioration in students' mental health. And as they've returned to in-person instruction, we've seen an extraordinary increase in chronic absenteeism.
And some public schools are tackling those challenges as they face budget constraints, as their funding partly depends on the number of students enrolled. There's also the problem of pandemic relief funding drying up in September.
Many school districts have been using those federal resources to prop up their budgets during a period of sustained enrollment decline.
Some are even considering closures, which Sophocles Goulas with the Brookings Institution says can be very disruptive.
And the outcomes of these students can vary a lot based on where they land.
But it's not all bad news for public schools. Goulas research shows that some students who left during the pandemic are coming back.
If there will be a recovery, this is how it should start looking like. Stabilization may be some week, increasing in overall enrollment.
And Miguel Urquola, an economist with Columbia University, says lots of education funding is not tied to enrollment. However, the migration away from public schools does present another problem.
The people who leave the public sector there are often, for example, you know, more motivated people or wealthier people. Then there could be a change in sort of the support for public spending.
In other words, they may not want their tax dollars spent on public schools. I'm Elizabeth Troval for Marketplace.
Coming up on Marketplace later today with Kai Rizdal, a look at caregiving for families with children who have severe disabilities. In some cases, states will pay parents to be caregivers. But over the past year, at least 11 states have considered cutting these programs. You can listen on many public radio stations or at marketplace.org. In New York, I'm Subri Benashur with the Marketplace Morning Report. From 8:00 p.m., American Public Media.
The April 1, 2024 City Council Meeting is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Mrs. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pretty? Okay, Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Whiteboyd?
Here.
Mr. Volason?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and of course, as president. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 p.m. and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronokva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right, and items for action. There's a communication from the mayor's office requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion.
So I move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the motion passes. Now, there's any item listed on the 2:00 p.m. council docket requiring any discussion, clarification, additions or deletions? All right, with that, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for the briefings that we were to have this morning.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have two briefings today. The first is going to be a briefing from the Small Business Development Center, and that will be followed with our monthly briefing, our final monthly briefing before submission of the FY '25 budget. With the Small Business Development Center, of course, as you all know, we enhanced our relationship with them in the course of the last year, and they've relocated and are actually housing in the One Jefferson Building currently, along with the workforce development administrative offices as well. And so Amanda is going to share with you kind of what they've been working on over the course of the year and looking forward into the next year as well. And then after that, we'll get into the budget discussion again. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. This is going to be a challenge to stay right here. I like to move around when I talk, so y'all correct me, course correct, if I start moving Okay, fantastic. If not, we'll go with it. My name's Amanda Forrester, and I'm the Executive Director for the Greater Roanoke and the New River Valley Small Business Development Centers and have worked closely with the city manager and others to make sure that our host transition, our fiscal host transition, has been as smooth as possible. And I want to thank you this morning for bringing us on into your organization. We've already had so many benefits, and the small businesses have benefited as well. And so I'm here this morning to share with you some of our work and economic impact from 2023, so that you can see the work that we've done, and then we'll compare next year as well. So as you may know, we are a national organization with centers all over the nation. And in Virginia, we have 27 centers, us being one of the largest regions. We have 22 counties, cities, and towns that we serve the small businesses in here for our two regions. And so our team is up here. We do have an open position that will be posted shortly to replace someone in the New River Valley. But our team works all with small businesses and with our programming and training that we do. So in 2023, and in 2022, it actually remained the same for both years, the federal government invested $134.5 million in the SBDC program across the nation. In 2025, we're going to be asking for $140 million, and in 2026, we're going to be asking for $160 million. And that is where our grant income comes from to cover about half of our operating Last year, we served 1,048 small businesses in our two regions. And to put that in a little bit perspective, we have the capacity and grant funding to serve 500 businesses. That's our annual goal and how we're staffed. However, during the pandemic, we had to get pretty creative and figure out how can we operate with the same staff better, more efficient, faster? And so we've done a lot of that work. And although the 1,048 is a lot of small businesses for us, we are very busy, we were able to manage it and excited about that. We don't see that volume going down. It has been remaining consistent during the pandemic, we're around 2,000 small businesses. So you can see here, in addition to the one-on-one advising and the work that we do with small businesses, we also do a lot of training. And we had 1,307 small businesses attend training in our regions, and we had a little over 3,000 advising hours from our team. The percentages that you see smaller on the above record there is specifically Roanoke City. So 28% of the 1,048 were Roanoke City small businesses, and across the board, you can see the same. So you can see that the city is a pretty large portion of what we do. It is the largest out of all of our localities. We had 15,000 on the dot. How does that happen? Website visits last year, that's a big deal to us because we have a lot of resources and things on our website for small businesses to access 24/7. So we do track how often are people coming to our website and looking and searching around? We have a lot of downloads and worksheets for them to use, and we had 998 downloads, which is a record for us. We're usually around 400, but we've been working hard to build that. And as you can see, obviously, it's something that the businesses are wanting and needing. And then on YouTube is where we post recordings of trainings that we've done in the past and new trainings. We had over 2,500 views on those in 2023. Again, something that we track because it's a way that we can serve businesses without our time, one-on-one. To get a breakdown of who our clients are, 61% of the small businesses we work with are owned, 51% are more by women, 7% veteran-owned, and 29% minority-owned. And then let's look at some of our economic results. We like to say that we create jobs, and we have new business starts, and a big one is capital, having access to capital. You're going to see that here in a moment. We had 31 small business in our region report that they started a business with our help. I want to say "report" because sometimes it's hard to get evidence that they've started. We don't just mark, oh, they started, check. We have to have something from them that shows that they've had sales in their business or they've hired employees, not just got their business license. So 31 from last year, we had 127 jobs created. That's not just with new businesses, that's with existing businesses as well. And 9.27 million in financing for the small businesses of our region. We work really closely with the small businesses to prepare them for financing and help match them to the best loan or best type of debt financing that's going to work for their Last year, our clients that we worked with generated $429 million in revenue, AKA tax dollars, which represents, and that's almost $7,000 every eight-and-a-half minutes that they're selling. We know that SBDC-established clients have 24% greater sales than those who are not working with an SBDC. Some of the programs that we have going on in our center, I won't, you know, brief you on this today, certainly if you want to know more about the specifics. We have ongoing training that we do, but we also have bigger programs that are a big thing that we do every year, and these are just some of those. I want to thank Mr. Covsworth's open-mic night suggestion. We ran with that. We had a quick conversation with him and are running with that here in just a few Let me talk numbers, just so that you can see. I know in a couple of months, I'm going to be coming back to you with our budget and our subaward agreement with George Mason University, so I'll prepare you for that. In 2024, this year, our operating costs are $391,412. That does not include in-kind. For example, the space that we're in today is not in that, but all of our operating costs that we're paying out are. Our grant for 2024 is $195,706,000. That includes a base grant plus a performance award that we received last year because of our economic impact from the Small Business Administration. And then in 2024, you can see that I've already secured $161,000 in cash. Our goal is $195,000, so I'm in the thick of that now. And you can see what our total current available funds are. And of course, by the end of the year, we'll have the full 391, 412, and more. This is just kind of our wish list that we've out there, addition to our operating budget, just so that you can see how our center functions. We are in need of a full-time program director. We have a part-time program director, but as you saw in our numbers, it's the most requested thing, is to have training and resources, and we don't have the capacity to do more than we are doing today or to meet that increasing demand. So we'd like to have a full-time program director, which is normal for us. We typically do have a full-time program director, and have had to cut that in the recent years. We want to bring on a minority program coordinator or director to do both regions and reach out to minorities. We had that during the pandemic, and it was so successful and much needed and wanted, and we continue to do that work. But we'd like to have a specific program coordinator that can really help us ramp up those services in those areas across the regions. Client service coordinator is something that most SBDC offices have. We have not had one probably for about 10 years, and we're in the need now because the volume is so high to have that. So I do a lot of the administration work along with my team, and I really need to free them up to be working with small businesses. And then our great wish list is to have a van that we can take around to all of our localities. We'd love to have the city of Roanoke plastered on it and go into these counties and meet people where they are. Right now, we're personally driving and going out, but it's not a big hurrah, right? But if we show up in a van, you know, we can park on a main street and have businesses come to us in that van, and that's really a wish list of ours, so that we can see more people where they are, which today, we really, they have to come to us for us to be effective. And then we have a lot of wonderful support locally. That's what makes our region's SPC so strong, is because of the support that we have across the localities, and you can see those there, as well as corporate fundraising, which we are increasing this year. We'll bring in, we bring in about $32,000 in corporate fundraising, and this year, we'll be bringing in around $60,000, again, trying to meet those big goals that we have. If you don't already, I encourage you to follow us on social media. That's where you'll see what we're doing. That's where you'll see the businesses that we work with engage with us. You can see who we're working with and invite you on any of the channels to engage with us there or just watch along as we work throughout the year and share stories of small business. That's all I have today. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer those. I also have client success stories that I'll be glad to leave here for you if you'd like to take a look. Absolutely, just to show you some of the clients that we work with. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Amanda, thank you for your presentation. I only have one quick question, and you kind of breeze through it really quickly. About your programs and the services that you offer, a lot of times, we fall short because we don't really get the information out to the community. And I know you're briefing us, but a lot of times, we have our residents who are watching, and so they really didn't catch it in this presentation. And I looked at the website, and it's not really detailed or listed there. Is there some programs or some opportunities for somebody to come and listen to also the programs that you have, maybe like workshops and things like that? Are they listed also on your website?
They're listed if they're coming up. So let's say we have one in September, you're not going to see that yet on our website. But once we're able to open it up and start administering that. If we had a client services coordinator.
So they would be doing something similar to that?
It would be. So if they follow along on social media, but also on our website, they are on there about six weeks before the event happens, so that people can see that. And then we also partner with our economic development offices across the region to get the workshops and programs in the newsletters. That's actually one of our biggest drivers of attendance, is those newsletters that our localities are sending out.
Yeah, I appreciate the information. It's always really good information. We have wonderful services. The problem is, we are not able to communicate that to the people who are in need of those services. So I'm just brainstorming, trying to think of ways to make sure that they are connected with your services, because there are so many folks who are interested in starting small businesses but are not familiar with the resources or are not sure where to start. And I'm really not sure that they would get it exactly from your website. I'm just trying to figure out some other places they may get that information.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd love to hear more, and we could brainstorm. I have lots of things running through my head.
We'll have to brainstorm together, because it's a vital role. Yeah, it's really important, and we'll need to make sure people can access it if they need it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Ms. Forrester, for the presentation. One of the questions I have, you know, we're here on council, what are some of the challenges that your clients are seeing with starting up small businesses in this area? And are there any things particularly that we can do?
Accessing financing is the biggest startup challenge. The best thing that we can do that we've seen, because they're not going to get access to financing as a startup, it's, we don't have that opportunity unless we have local programs that help with that. So KIVA is a local program that we don't have here but is a possibility, and other types of local revolving credit lines and things like that. And so the localities that have those, we're able to help startups get those. But the other challenge that we have is a lot of startups don't have the personal credit needed for financing, even when it is available. So really, getting them to that point, we work with the Financial Empowerment Center here at the city of Roanoke, another great partnership, to help get people ready so that when they need funding, what are the collateral that they have? It's really an education and training process of getting them to that point. And that's why in our startup classes, we have over 300 attendees a year come to our startup classes. But as you can see, 31 of those actually started the business, and it's because we're having to work with them much longer to get their credit where it needs to be, to understand the expenses that they're going to face. Certainly, if they're a brick and mortar, what are those expenses? It's not just the monthly lease, and helping them understand that, and then having that gap of saving or finding the funds that can help them, or the collateral that they need, or the personal assets that they have to start those businesses. So that's one for startups. For growing businesses, our biggest challenge that we have is employment. It's finding and keeping talent and being able to afford to pay and compete to get the talent, particularly as a lot of our workforce has gone remote still and remains that way in high-paying positions. And so it's really tough for, for example, our marketing agencies to find, or tech agencies to find and retain talent and compete for that. So it's something that we're constantly working on with them and brainstorming ways for them to find and keep talent. But it certainly is one of the bigger things that we see. And then last thing I mentioned, there's a lot of buys and sells happening right now, which we do a lot of help with facilitating either one of those, whether they're buying a business or selling a business. We're happy to see that, but it's a lot. It's a lot to take on. We'd much rather see that than closing the doors. And so we want to be of help in that, but it's very popular over the past six months. It's, you know, I have an advisor that's almost doing that full-time.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
A lot of transition.
It's a lot.
Awesome. Well, thank you for that information.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
All right, and you, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you for those questions. Amanda, thank you for this information. Two quick questions. Could you tell us a little bit about your Retailpreneur program?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's new this year. Two years ago, we did a Foodiepreneur program, which was well-accepted and loved. It was a full-day conference that we brought people in the food industry together. And this year, we're going to do it with the retail industry. Retail is the biggest industry that we serve. Out of all of our mix codes, retail is the biggest. So we're going to do a Retailpreneur program. It's going to be coming up in June. We'll be releasing more about that in three weeks from now, I believe. It will be a week-long program. It won't be a full-day conference. We've listened to what our small businesses want and need, particularly in the retail industry, because those folks are in their stores running them. It's hard for them to get away to come to a conference. It'll be a week-long event where we have in-person and virtual opportunities for them to collectively work together, but also to hear from industry experts from around the nation and bring them the resources and tools that they need specifically to run their retail stores and operations. So we're really excited about that. We are doing Foodiepreneur again in the fall, but Retailpreneur is new for us, and we're excited to see how that goes and what the interest is.
And this last question I have is, could you talk a little? You mentioned KIVA before, and I've done, been to several conferences where KIVA has been very effective in local communities. Can you talk a little bit about what that kind of partnership would look like locally?
Sure. We have explored that with economic development as well. Both of us have gone and explored. We need, it's been a few years now, I believe the dollar amount is $125,000 to get started with KIVA. And then going forward, there just has to be a dedicated program manager, which we've budgeted $25,000 to $35,000 for a year. And I believe the fee to continue with KIVA is $55,000 a year. Again, that was three years ago. I don't, I don't know what the fee is today. We could certainly look at that, but it is something that a city has to be in a relationship with KIVA, and you're considered a KIVA city, and it offers opportunities for small businesses to work with a program director to get a specific dollar amount, depends on how much they set, of friends and family funds, and it helps them walk through that process. it helps them walk through that process. And then those funds are matched by various banks. So there's no financial commitment from the partner. KIVA does all of the funding operations, but there is a fee to be part of that program, to use the platform, to bring small businesses onto it and help develop those funds, to teach them the saving methods and reaching out to friends and families for equity or just investment, and then turning that into matched financing dollars. So it is a great program in the cities that we, and I'm sure if you've been to the conferences, how impactful that can be, but there is a cost to it.
And I think the key is it goes back to one of the challenges you mentioned, which was accessing financing as a startup. And it's starting with the people you know and then building on that with local financial support.
And I think the fantastic thing about KIVA is it teaches you that process. You don't know what you don't know, right? As a small business owner. And so going through that process and learning it, then the next step is to build that, one, your credit store, but also to build that confidence and ability to do that again when it's needed next time and not have to have the platform to help you do that. It's a really cool kind of teach you how to fish program that we've always been excited about. We would look for, in addition, there would have to be some base funding and then we've tried to go out to some of our corporations to also support that. And we had raised or had a commitment for around 25,000 at the time. I personally can't fundraise for it because it's a conflict of interest with the funding piece, but I can certainly help and help connect those pieces. And that's something that our organization and many SBCs across the nation operate and run for localities.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Just wanted to acknowledge the work that her and her team have done and certainly I know I don't want to volunteer her space, but I know she's happy to show it off. So if anyone wants to actually visit Amanda and her team over at One Jefferson, they've done a great job of that, of that facility. And part of the reason why we asked you all to allow us to host SBDC was in that building alongside the workforce development and with our economic development team, we think there's some opportunities to explore that we've not been able to explore previously. And of course, Amanda, you saw all of the partners up there. It also gives us an avenue to explore with other economic development partners all across the two regions. So it's been a great partnership so far. The folks at George Mason have been very supportive also with this effort. So looking forward to many more years of work with it.
Yeah, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here. And I know our businesses do too. Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll be ready. Mayor of council, we are today going to present a fairly lengthy, so there's a lot of items that are on here that I'll go through in just a moment with this. But this is the final briefing that we have before we actually, before I'll actually present the proposed budget, which will be April 15th, as you all, of course, are aware. Again, the briefing today is, is fairly lengthy and we're trying to cover a number of items that we either have already previously started covering and we want to kind of wrap some of those up. And there's a few items that we'll be sharing with you and kind of introducing at this time as we move our way forward into the actual proposal. So a few of the items that we'll be covering today include the reminder of our priority expenditures, the final update of our revenue projections. If you remember, we've been working off of revenue projections that we shared with you in January. And so this will be our final update of those revenue projections and what we anticipate we'll be working with on the April 15th budget submission. A five-year outlook on revenues and expenditures. This is a best practice that is used with municipalities to kind of not only look at the current year revenue and expenditures, but out over the next four or five years, something that we have done each year as we move forward at this, at this point in time. And we'll share that information with you. We will also share with you our preliminary FY25 compensation proposals. We'll give you an update on the status of balancing. Spoiler alert, the budget is not yet balanced, but it will be on April 15th when we submit it to you all and we'll talk a little bit more about that. We'll do a very quick review of the CIP, the five-year CIP, because we want to actually move into what we, what we shared with you once before, which are the unmet CIP needs. And we've kind of prioritized those as you all had requested and we want to spend just a few moments kind of talking about that. As you all know, with the CIP, the only item that we're actually ultimately going to be seeking action on is in the FY25 budget, but certainly want to continue to give you a preview of what lies ahead and of those needs that have not yet been identified to be included in the CIP. We also will then have a discussion on the real estate rate. This is something that you all had asked to have further conversation on with that rate. So we'll have that discussion. Obviously to this point, and I'll talk more about it when we get to it, the budget that we're working on right now presumes that the rates remain the same, but we'll talk about that when we get to that, to that discussion item. We will also introduce to you the FY23 year-end surplus uses. Typically, the FY23 year-end information would have already been presented to you, already acted upon, but of course, you know, with the delays associated with the GRTC audit, we're just now at that point in being able to do that. So we'll share that information with you. There's no action on that. It'll come later, but we wanted to share with you how those dollars are intended to be used. And then, of course, we'll end with our next steps, which is really transitioning into the budget submission as well as the upcoming public hearings and then ultimately action on the budget. So before I hand this off, I want to highlight again kind of what we've shared with you from going all the way back to your retreat as to the expenditure priorities. At the top of that list are contractual and inflationary increases. We've talked a lot about those, but everything that we buy has cost and is costing us more and also our contracts that we have with vendors continue to increase also. So that's always been the top of the list and priorities. Of course, with your assistance, we have made strides in the last few years on compensation. That has, that continues to be an expenditure priority and that includes the continued implementation of the Public Safety Step Pay Plan. It also includes getting the rest of our general population, non-sworn positions up to the target minimum. And again, we'll talk about each of these as we get further into the, into the discussion. An overall increase for that same population and there were another, a number of other items that I've mentioned previously that we'll talk about in compensation. The, the third expenditure priority centers around capital and that really comes in two areas, which is everything, again, that we're building or buying is actually costing us considerably more. Main Street Bridge, of course, being the most recent example of that. And of course, the cost of borrowing is going, or not going up, but it has gone up based off of the interest rates. We're still getting very good rates, but they certainly cost us more than they did even a year or two years ago. Then, of course, after all of that, there are priorities attached with each of the departments and what their requests are and with our external agencies and their requests. You just heard from Small Business Development Center, while that increase they're looking for does not come exclusively from us, because it comes from all of the partners, the local governments and from private business, there is, as an example, an interest there in expanding their budget. There are many other external agencies as well. So those are our expenditure priorities. We'll talk about each one of these as we move through the presentation, as we, as we kind of work our way through this. So there's going to be a number of us taking turns in doing this and so, but we'll move as quickly as we can, but feel free to ask questions as we go through this because there is, since we kind of move from topic to topic, it's going to be difficult to remember your question all the way to the end, so feel free to ask that as we move our way through there. So, Mayor, you figure?
Thank you.
All right, then we will move forward with, Jason's going to give us an update on the revenues.
All right, thank you, Bob. Good morning, Mayor Lee, Mayor Vice, or Vice Mayor Cobb and members of city council. I'm pleased to be here this morning to provide updated revenues for FY25. And, okay, so just to dive into, I'm short, so forgive me there. All right, just to dive into it, we'll start with the local taxes. Not much changes coming from the presentation back in January. There are some revenues that have increased and of course, some have decreased and some that have actually remained the same. Primarily, the one that remained the same would be the real estate tax. Not much change going on from there based off of the information provided by Mr. Bratton in January. So that one remained steady. And then, whoops, getting all my notes here together. There are, to mention some other changes though, for increases of, we'll note personal property tax. It's a positive consequence of increased automobile inventories. You could drive down Peters Creek and see all the lots with, with more cars in there compared to the previous years. In FY, I'm sorry, in 2021 to 2023, revenues were generally nine percent year over year. That was mainly due to those increased costs of, as a result of the low inventories. But they're starting to taper down now post-COVID, around 3.8% in FY25 is my projection. And then it's mainly coming back to pre-COVID levels, so just maintaining, maintaining that level at that rate. Sales tax, that one has slightly decreased from January by about half a percent. I feel like in the past previous months, just from observation and analysis, that it has reached its plateau over the past few months. So that rate of growth has steadily leveled off. I don't see it nose-diving going into FY2025 because of the resiliency of the economy, as I mentioned before, in the budget retreat and as well as back in January. We still have folks that are shopping. There's also going to be some plays in the economic area when it comes to lowering increase, I'm sorry, lowering the federal interest rate, which is expected around June. So I foresee, just based off of observation, that that may start to pick back up again in, right after the holidays at the end of this year. So the first half of fiscal year 2025 may just be steady, but it may pick up again in January, just based off of what I'm hearing and researching. I think the next two items to speak on local taxes speak impressively of the hospitality industry in Roanoke. Transient occupancy continues to flourish post-pandemic. FY2023 was nearly 5.5 million while FY24 is showing a conservative estimate. I foresee that going up over half a million dollars over last year's budget. We also see revamped hotels coming online and as you probably noted in recently in the news, there's that $14 million expansion at the Hotel Roanoke. That just is a testament to how resilient that transient occupancy tax is to our local economy. Another item to mention is the prepared food and beverage tax. That one is really astounding to me in a good way. I could only foresee that continuing into FY2025 with a 3.4% increase over FY24 projections. This is very much in line with the National Restaurant Association's forecast that the food industry, the food service industry will continue to grow this year and next year. And before I move into non-local taxes, those are just some of the highlights on local taxes and I'm happy to address any questions you may have. Non-local taxes, not much excitement going on here. I'll just, I'll call a couple of highlights out. Permits fees and licenses continue to show increased revenue due to just overall activity of new construction. I'll have to confirm with planning and building on any specific activities that's, that's a driver behind that, but I actually just foresee that just being an overall increase. We're seeing this throughout the country as well. So there's, there's definitely growth there. Charges for services is also showing an increase due to the increasing cost of services. A major contributor to that would be like the school share for CSA, school share for school resource officers. Solid waste and collections is showing very steady growth this year and I project that into next year as well, as well as fire and EMS fees. As you, as you can recall, council approved the, the rate increase on that. None this year, however, though, that is definitely panning out into this year's revenues on fire EMS collection rates. Any questions on non-local taxes? Overall, this is just a revenue summary of what we saw on the previous two slides. One call out I do, I do need to address here is on the school share. Originally back in January, I had that at 108 million dollars, even though local taxes and non-local taxes are a general fund increased by about $4 million. That one did decrease down and that was mainly an error on my part and oversight on the calculation. There were some adjustments that weren't being collected in, back in December when I was, when I was doing my analysis. So really that back in January should have reported like 106 million. So with those increases that I'm reporting to you today, that brings it up to 106,900,000 dollars for the schools. As you can see, that's a 5.3% increase, which is very much in line with what you're seeing on the local tax increase of 5.3%. Also with the Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, that was a slightly increase as well, just because, as I mentioned, the transient occupancy tax has increased, at least it's showing a very good increase for FY25. So that has been increased as well. Most of the increases for the general fund mainly came on the non-local tax side with the charges for services, as I mentioned earlier. But other than that, that would be our bottom line summary for FY25 revenues. Any questions on the summary?
And the only thing I'll say on this slide is, so the, the 18 million dollar number at the bottom, that's the number that we're, that we are using as we proceed with developing the, the final budget proposal that will come to you all. So that's in effect, the increase in revenue that is available to be programmed into the, into the budget. And this is the number we'll continue to work with as we, as we finish up the budget.
Any areas in particular, Mr. Powell, you're thinking about allocating it or anything in mind?
Yeah, we'll share, we got plenty of places. Most of it into compensation. So you'll see that when we get into this. Yeah, and that, you'll see that through the rest of this presentation.
All right, thank you. You've seen this slide before, however, this now has updated revenue projections for FY2024 as well as the forecast for '25 there in the gray shaded columns. But this is just a 10-year look back of actual revenues. You could see the growth rate has, it's got its peaks and valleys. I foresee us entering a valley season right now with FY24 projections coming in lower growth, still growth, just not as strong and robust as it was in the previous years following COVID. Next year, we show a 2.7% increase over FY24 projections. So there's still growth, as I mentioned, it's just declining growth, but I'm not alarmed that it's going to go below, below that. You could barely notice it on that red line. This is the inflationary value impacts of, of our revenue. So in 2015, if I purchased an item back for $100 in 2015, that same item is going to be $131 today. And I'm sure Bob and staff will talk about expenditures and, and costs of inflation and how it's hitting our, our revenues. But nonetheless, revenues are still growing.
Yeah, I think the, as we, we always show this slide to you during the retreat and in other briefings, really to give you a sense of our, our, our relative purchasing power associated with thankfully increasing revenues. And over the last two years, those were really in the last 10 years, the last two years were the first years that we actually finally started seeing that incrementally increase. Not, not dramatically, but at least now we can say our purchasing power is slightly more than it was in 2015, which is good, but it's taken a long time to get to that, to that point. And, and again, you know, as we begin to experience similar inflationary impacts, it may erode that further, but hopefully that has stabilized.
All right, moving on to the five-year revenue and expenditure outlook. I like to call this the alligator graph. You got, you could draw teeth in there and it'll look like an alligator biting, biting something. But nonetheless, we'll start with the blue line, which is going to be our revenue growth. That's at a very modest 3.7%. That's very much in line with what we saw pre-pandemic as activities and revenue streams are returning, I like to say, returning back to normal activity where it's predictable, at 3.7%. The expenditure growth, however, though, is at a higher growth rate, 5%. And as Bob alluded to at the, at the briefing of the agenda, you're going to see a lot of that due to cost of increased services, inflationary impacts, as well as compensation that, that rolls into that as well.
And the real purpose of this slide, and again, this is, this is put forward as a best practice for municipalities to look ahead and what you're really looking for is structural deficiencies. And so one could look at this and say, well, it shows expenditures exceeding revenues. That's pretty typical. Everybody that is going to show this shows it. What you're looking for is how wide open sort of that, that gap is. And some of you may recall, a number of years ago, it's probably getting close to around eight years or so ago, that started to happen. That started to really expand to a point where there were concerns about structural sustainability associated with the budget. And that's actually when the council added the, the solid waste fee, because at that point, it was determined that a portion of the cost of providing that service needed to be borne through a user charge versus just through the general fund. And that's an example of how that would be used. And so if you went back and looked at it, it was pretty wide open. After that, revenue was introduced into it, it closed back up a bit with it. Obviously, you know, we internally sort of joke a little bit about this because even though it always shows that being mismatched, of course, it's our obligation to always bring to you a balanced budget and you have to approve a balanced budget. So again, the use of it is to really look ahead and look for something significant occurring. Right now, we don't foresee that. Hopefully, we continue on this pace and we'll be able to, to balance those budgets, but that's one of the reasons why we revisit this each year.
All right, I believe that concludes the revenue side. Before I pass it over to my colleagues, thank you for your time and I hope you have a great morning.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. So, so the intent of that, those slides, of course, were to share with you all kind of an update on the revenues that we an update on the revenues that we have available to be able to proceed forward in completing our budget proposal. Now, we're going to kind of work our way through the other items that were on the agenda, some of these being priority expenditures, some of them being sort of updates on where different things are. And I'm going to begin with the compensation discussion. And as you know, with your support, we've been able to do compensation increases over the last several years, really to maintain our market position. And it was interesting to hear Amanda say this about the biggest challenge for existing businesses being the ability to attract and retain talent. No different, no different for us with that. And a big part of that, not exclusively, but a large part of that certainly is compensation. And that's why it's been one of those top priorities for some time for us, as well as for you. You may recall that a number of years ago, that started off with a market assessment, where we had a consultant take a look at our competitors, if you will, who we are competing with to secure that talent, and identify gaps that needed to be addressed. All of that was started before COVID. Obviously, COVID disrupted that and actually made it more challenging, because as people started to increase their flexibility for work environments, as the Great Resignation took place, competition really ramped up for folks and for compensation. And so if anything, what we had identified through that market assessment as gaps really has occurred at an accelerated pace since we kind of have started to move out of COVID. With your support, we began our efforts focused on public safety positions and high turnover, high demand positions. So think of something like our Department of Technology positions, for example, or DSS positions. That included substantially increasing compensation, as well as a series of one-time cash bonuses that were put in place over a series of years. Much of that work's been completed, and you'll see that in this discussion as we move forward. You'll know that we completed kind of our initial work on public safety last year, and so we were actually at the point of sustaining the system we have in place. And I believe, in one of our previous presentations, between FY21 and FY24, compensation overall grew by 21.6 million. So that's how much we've been able to add into our compensation with that, and of course, a large portion of that being associated with public safety. So police, fire, EMS, and the sheriff's department with those. With the current budget, we were able to sustain in our current year that we're in, we're able to sustain those increases that were provided by public safety. That means they're now moving along their step increases that are a part of their step plan, and we were able to turn our attention to the non-public safety employees. And as you know, we had, in that study, we had a target minimum. We were attempting to move every employee toward, and of course, you know that we got most of that done, but not all of it. There were about 200 employees that received a 7% increase, but were not yet to that minimum target as we moved in. With the FY25 budget, we'll be addressing these employees, getting them to that target minimum, and then going kind of beyond that. So let me move to talking a little bit more about that. So again, what we're likely to be pursuing, although again, I have to keep prefacing this by, the budget is not yet balanced, but we're going to try to balance the budget on other things besides compensation. So I feel fairly confident that we'll be able to move these items forward in the way in which we're indicating. So as mentioned, we'll continue our next step increase. So all of our police positions, all of our fire EMS positions, and all of our sheriff positions will move forward in their next step on their step pay plan. The one unknown in terms of a revenue side is, the General Assembly's proposed budget came out with additional 599 funding, and of course, that has not yet been approved. That budget has not yet been approved, so we therefore don't know how much additional 599 funding we will receive. It won't affect this. What it will do is it will provide us some additional revenue, which in the last time there was an increase, we delivered directly into compensation for law enforcement. So that may be another way in which we still can meet this obligation that might help us balance the budget also. We just probably won't know that for a number of weeks as we move, as the state moves through their budget approval. As mentioned, there were about 205 employees who did not reach that target minimum. This will increase their salaries to that target minimum. This will then, our proposal will include a 3% increase for all of the non-sworn positions. And the reason for the non-sworn is because the step increase is already taking care of their increase. So the non-sworn positions will receive a 3% pay increase if the budget ends up getting approved as presented. That would include those folks that were just moved from the minimum target. So the 205 individuals will move to their minimum target. They will then be eligible, just like all of the other employees, for that 3% pay increase. Other items include, and I'll get into more details on this, increasing starting pay for police and fire EMS. Of course, through this process, previously, we've already done that once. However, the market keeps moving on us, and so in order to remain our competitive in our position to be able to recruit folks, we want to end up increasing those. Again, I already mentioned kind of current General Assembly actions. On the revenue side, there could also be an expense side in the past. It doesn't look like they're probably going to do that, because they're keeping proposals at 3% increases. But in the past, you may recall that the General Assembly, and ultimately the governor, ended up approving higher increases beyond what it was that we had in our budget for those state positions, so those comp board positions, and actually set a new starting pay for the sheriff's department that exceeded what we had as the starting pay. Those things could still happen, and we'll just have to accommodate those if they do as we move through. And then an additional performance-based pay for, sorry.
I just wanted to ask a question. How many employees are we talking about with Sheriff's Department?
Total employees?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of that we're, that seeking compensation from.
Yeah, so all of the sworn positions receive a portion of their money from the state through the comp board, and a portion of their money from us. I mean, technically, in Virginia, you know, the theory is the state gives you enough money through the comp board to actually pay for a number of positions, Commonwealth Attorney, Treasurer, Sheriff's Department, and so on. Localities can supplement that revenue, which I can tell you that every locality supplements that revenue to some degree, because you would not hire anybody based on what the state actually provides you. And so in the case of the Sheriff's Department, over the last couple of years, they offered compensation increases that were above what we were offering our other employees at the state level in the comp board piece. And we chose, with your help, we chose to match that with our locals, so that if they were offered a 5% increase, for example, they received the full benefit of a 5% increase. They also, in that process, set that new starting pay for the sheriff's deputies, and may again do that this year. I don't know if they're going to do that. That was unusual. They haven't in the past done that. In the past, they've just awarded certain percentage increases, but they established that piece for the Sheriff's Department as well. They did that also in a couple of other areas. I think they did that possibly in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. They set certain minimums in those departments also. But it affects actually all the sworn positions.
Thank you.
Sure. I mean, the last item on other items that we'll talk about as well is an additional performance-based pay for directors that I'll talk about in just a moment. And that is partly due, one, to competition. The other piece is, the directors have actually not been a part of our previous market adjustments. So we did not actually change, whereas the other employees were part of that market study, and we made adjustments based on that, the directors along the way have been receiving the standard 2%, 3%, whatever the percentage increase. And again, I'll talk about that more in just a moment.
Mr. Cowell, what would be the starting pay for police and fire and EMS?
Just about to get there. That's the next slide.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Hi, Ms. Moon Reynolds has a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
On the progress of public safety initiatives, where you have the next step increase, can you give me an example? I'm just trying to get where you're at.
Sure. So what we did, one, three years ago, I guess now it is, we actually took, so all of our public safety employees through history have just been sort of assigned the same status as all of the other employees. So if the employees received a 2% pay increase, all of the public safety received a 2% pay increase. What we, in discussions with the chiefs at the time, and with the officers and others, we did not feel, a couple of things were happening, did not feel that was being responsive to what we needed to be able to do. We needed to make bigger adjustments in public safety than what we were doing with the other employees. And they also wanted to add some increased certainty, where there is always uncertainty as to what we'll be able to do on our other employees. All things being equal, we would move people from step to step, unless for some reason we were in a negative financial position. And so now what they have is, every rank has actually a progression. So they may be at step eight on the progression, and it will step them all the way through to, say, step 20 or 23. And each year, they know then what their pay increase will be, and it changes through that time. It's a little bit heavier loaded toward the beginning part of their career, and slows down a bit toward their longer part, and that's part of the retention associated with that. But they'll know, I mean, the same is true when they get promoted. They actually know then where they get placed on that step plan as they get promoted, and it adds kind of a layer of predictability to their process.
This is what you shared with us three years ago?
Yes, yes.
I believe it was, when you were showing the steps.
Yes.
And there was some concern at that time, I believe, with going from, I want to say, an officer and being promoted, and that there was not that much of a difference in an increase or an incentive.
Yeah, and we reworked all of that over the last two years. And so that has all been addressed in there.
And then under your increased salaries for your 205, where you say you did not reach their, where they did not reach their target minimum, what was the target?
So it varies depending on pay grade. So every one of our pay grades had a new target minimum attached to them. So if you were a pay grade 12, you had a particular new minimum for your pay range, and that was true for every one of our pay grades. And we were able to move just about all of our employees to that new pay grade or beyond. But those 200, even with the 7% addition that we provided at last year or in this year's budget, we were unable to get them to that target minimum. But each one of those pay grades have that.
Now, the ones that were at, Lord forbid, the pay grade five, the lowest, the lowest.
So one of the other things we did with your support is, the first thing we actually did was increase our minimum wage to $15 an hour. And so that raised everybody before we even had any of these pay grade adjustments. And so they continue, so there's actually a couple of pay grades previously that we had that kind of have now been consolidated into a single pay grade, because we had pay grades that paid as low as $9 an hour. All of those have now been brought into that $15 an hour range. So no one makes less than $15 an hour.
Less than $15.
Correct, yeah. And the other thing, and I'll talk about this probably at the end, but the other item with the step pay plan, and this will be something we will look at probably in FY26, is while we've been doing all those over these last several years, both that minimum target pay that I mentioned, as well as the steps themselves, have understandably been frozen in time. We haven't been able to adjust the steps, and we have not been able to adjust those minimum targets yet. So one of the things that'll need to be addressed in FY26 is looking at how do we actually increase those steps?
Yes.
As well as how do we actually increase and to what amount those targets as we move in? But first, we have to get everybody to those points.
And on here, you have, under the other items, increase in the starting pay for the police and fire, and I hate to put you on the spot, but what is the starting salary now that you're looking to increase it to?
I'll get that in the next slide.
Oh, that's coming, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
Just a follow-up on this, Bob. I know we've made a significant investment over the last several years for all employees, but particularly for public safety. How is it working so far? What kind of progress are we seeing?
So at the March briefing, you all may recall that we shared with you a couple of items that kind of give us some indicators to that effect. So one of those is, so if you look at employees being divided up into kind of quartiles, and thinking of the first quartile as kind of your entry level for that pay grade, all the way up to your fourth quartile being kind of the upper end of that pay grade. And part of the objective was to get folks moved into that second and third quartile, or near the midpoint and stuff. So, and if you remember, for most of our pay grades, most are now shifting into that quartile too. So we're starting to see that movement, especially in pay grades nine through 12, which is where the bulk of our employees are. So the majority of our employees are now moving closer to that midpoint, which is what one of the objectives were. We also are starting to see the turnover rate across the organization stabilize, I'm not going to say decrease. There was obviously during COVID, like everyone, we saw a peak, and it's starting to kind of stabilize back down to rates closer to what pre-COVID were. So for example, pre-COVID was around 15%, 16%, and the last numbers we had were around 16%, 17%. That includes retirements. If you take off retirements, you're going from about 12, we're at about 14. So we're starting to get back down. It was actually, not counting retirements, it was as high as 17% at one time. We're starting to see that kind of stabilize. Same is true on public safety. Fire EMS is fully staffed. We're actually into our over-hire, so we authorize, for recruit purposes, we authorize the chief to actually hire more than the number of people that we actually have available slots for, and that's because we know folks will retire, and we want to go ahead and get those in. Police are still, that stopped, we stopped seeing increases, and it's kind of stable. We've not seen yet much decrease yet. But we are still seeing recruit schools beginning to be able to be set and stuff, so hopefully, we're starting to see some of that maneuvering, or some of that advantage taking place with those. But I still think it's going to take quite a bit of time. And one of the reasons we're proposing to increase the starting pay is because, for the public safety, is the rest of the region continues to move further than we are on those. It's no secret, and we've said it before, that our fire EMS and our police starting pay is the lowest in the region. And so part of what we're going to be talking about is trying to address that as we move. And part of the reason for that is we were trying to address folks that were already in the organization in public safety and getting their salaries increased for retention purposes. And it looks like the retention piece is working now. We want to make sure the recruitment piece continues to, on public safety, continues to function that way.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that piece right there? I recall, and I'm trying to figure it out here, part of some of the challenges is that the police or the public safeties under the state, where we have private, if they come over, they don't get to bring the state.
Yeah, you're talking about the retirement pension.
Yeah, the pension piece.
Yeah, we've added, so you all may recall that we've added, with your approval, sign-on, signing bonuses. And the signing bonuses are for officers who are already sworn police officers, so coming from another jurisdiction. And we've actually had quite a bit of success with that. It has predominantly been folks from outside of the state. So it's been individuals who are seeking to leave usually higher costs, states, and coming here to work as a police officer. VRS, so those that are in VRS are unable to transfer over in the same fashion. And it's mixed. When we talk with public safety folks, some of them, that intrigues them, and some of them it does not, because they consider our pension program superior to the VRS program, partly because it's locally controlled with it. But yes, that is one of the, it hasn't hindered our ability to recruit folks from elsewhere, but most of those folks have come from outside the state.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Sanchez, June.
Is there a paid, is there a signing bonus for fire and EMS?
There is for paramedics, not for officers, because we've not had any issues previously with actually securing the recruitment class sizes that we're looking for. Matter of fact, we've actually had to add recruitment class sizes, but paramedics are one of our exceptions. So we do have signing bonuses for paramedics.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cowell, before you move on, just one quick question on the director's performance pay. How many folks are you looking at in that number?
There are, I want to.
I mean, it's not very much, you're talking 50,000.
No, it's not. And it wouldn't be for everyone, because it's performance-based. So I want to say.
Just an average, about just one.
I want to say about 15, 16 folks, I think, fall into that category. But I can get you an exact number on it. Because it's basically, all of the directors would be eligible for that piece. And I'll, again, I'll explain what I have in mind when I get to that point. Okay? So now let's get into numbers associated with this. Some of these numbers you've already seen previously, and so, you know, I won't dwell on some of those. So the cost of raising those 205 employees to that target minimum is about $1.2 million. The cost of that next step for police is about $458,000. For that next step for fire EMS is about half a million. The next step for sheriff is about $128,000. Then there is 5.7, 5.6 million associated with additional costs. These are the vacant positions that we have. We have to actually still have enough money in there to move them to the target, and even though we've been making all of these moves, we're not hiring people at the target minimum. New people coming into the organization or promoting within the organization are not generally promoting or hiring at that minimum. They're actually hiring or promoting slightly above that because of the competitive part of the market. So there's money put in there to be able to accommodate those elements. The cost of the 3% increase for the general population is another $2.3 million. The police starting pay will elevate to $49,555 when they complete their field training. So we have a two-step process with police. So $49,555 is what the recruit would get paid. When they complete the academy and complete their field training, that number goes up to over $50,000, $50,001 something is what that number is. By comparison, there are a couple of our local jurisdictions are slightly below that, and a couple of our local jurisdictions slightly above that. So we're kind of falling in the middle piece of that. And that's a roughly 17% increase from what the current starting pay is for police to what that new pay is. And it also requires us, some of the dollars associated with that require us, some folks that are in, already in the police department that are not at that amount get raised to that amount so that new recruits don't jump over those. Now, it does have the effect of compressing folks because can't avoid that when I've got to move, I don't have enough money to go back again into public safety and raise everybody again because that's what we've done over the last couple of years. But we want to try to, because we're trying to deal with the non-sworn positions in the organization first, or not first, but try to finish those up. On fire EMS, that is increasing the starting pay to 47,150. That's about an 8% increase. That puts us slightly below, I think, still what a couple of the other regions are and maybe one or two slightly above, but somewhere closer to market. I mean, I should say, these are, the numbers I'm giving you is kind of how it compares to the rest of the market is as of today. Don't know yet what it'll be once their budgets get approved because some jurisdictions are proposing additional increases for public safety, others are not. So that will, that will change again as, as we get into FY25. There is also, there was a request for the, from the sheriff to actually, to create a new rank within the sheriff's department for, of corporal. So if you, if you may recall, on our police side, we have police officers one and two and then a senior police officer. And the senior police officer is really kind of considered the first sort of step out of those entry level police positions. The sheriff is interested in creating a similar opportunity using this corporal rank. There's a limited number of those that would be authorized and the cost of that is estimated about $66,000.
And Bob, with this, is that comparable to what the police, the, the ones in the police department, we will be making on that same level, what you got here for the corporal positions?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know. I'll have to, I'll check and see. That, that cost is the cost, not the salary. That's the cost overall.
Right, with the benefit.
Yeah, I'll have to go, I'll, I'll look at that. I don't know. With it, typically, our sheriff's salaries are lower than, always have been lower than our police. And so I'm certain it's still lower, I just don't know how much lower and stuff. But I can find that out.
Okay. Mr. Cowell, what is the starting salary for the sheriff's department?
44,100.
Okay, thank you.
And that's the number, again, the, the state, unlike police and unlike fire EMS, the state sort of sets. Now, we can exceed that, but that's the number we've been using for, for that starting pay. And actually, as, until at this moment, our sheriff's starting pay is higher than our police starting pay. And so that's part of why we're trying to, to write that.
Is that because it's a constitutional?
Yes, yes. So they actually, the comp board basically set that kind of minimum salary.
Yeah, and that's true of all the other constitutional, they set the salaries for them.
Correct. And then in most cases, we supplement.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Cowell, are these, do you know what this starting pay is compared to our competitors in the valley here, Burnham County?
For police and for fire? I, I do, I don't have that with me, but I can get that for you. For police, this will put us right in the middle, right in the mix of that. For fire, we may still be slightly below what the others, but when I say slightly, like within a couple hundred dollars of what the others are. Although, again, I'll preface that by saying, as of today, I don't know ultimately what they're going to be proposing for FY25.
Mr. Cowell, we, well, I want the council to recognize there's a difference between sheriff deputy and a police officer in terms of their role in public safety.
Yeah, and I will say too, and I think most of you know this, it is, it is quite rare, quite rare, that we lose a police officer or a firefighter to any of our surrounding jurisdictions for a bunch of reasons. It's not unheard of, but it's relatively rare. Where we, where we compete is really as we're competing for recruits. And even then, like I said, we're filling our schools, we would just like to be able to make sure we maintain that competitive. We're filling them even being the lowest paid right now, but we'd like to make sure that we continue to maintain that position.
The SROs, when you just now mentioned the schools, is any of that funded through the schools?
Yes, so.
At one time I knew there was a, some of them were.
Yeah, and, and part of it's, part of it's changing because we're going through a transition with the SROs. So we, we previously have had SROs that are out of the sheriff's department and SROs out of the police department. The SROs out of the sheriff's department pretty much are full-time SROs. The SROs historically out of the police department were SROs during the school year, police officers during the off part of the school year, which meant we paid that part of the salary, the schools paid the other part of the salary. Schools paid the entirety of the, of the sheriff's position, the sheriff's SROs. We're transitioning to where the SROs are predominantly going to be sheriffs, so that entire cost will be, will be borne by the schools. And then the last few years, the schools have been able to benefit through a grant program that the state has established for SROs that runs through us, which has helped offset that cost for all of us. There are still costs that the city covers, so the cost of the vehicles, the cost of ballistic vests, the cost of camera, body cams, those things are all covered. Uniforms, those are all covered by the city, whether they're police or whether they're the sheriff through that. But yes, and that, so it's kind of evolving as it's gone through because both of the grants that have been previously available, not sure if those grants are going to continue to be available.
I was getting ready to ask you that.
Don't know. I mean, you know, there is this commitment and, you know, I hope they continue to honor this commitment. There's a lot of, there's a lot of statements made at the state level of their, of their financial support for SROs. And historically, that has not been the case. Those SROs have been locally funded. With these grants, they have been able to put money in. That has allowed us to work at the schools to actually expand SROs, the number of SROs that we have. So hopefully, the state continues to put funding alongside those statements of support for.
Because they, that's because they came from the state to put SROs in all the schools.
Right, that was their objective and that's why they put that grant program out there. And hopefully, they'll continue to have that grant program because it's a, it is, it's costly and so hopefully, they'll keep doing that.
And if they don't, does, then does the burden actually fall on the city?
No, it would, it would continue. If, if the number of SROs continued to be the same number, the school would continue to fund those positions, except for any part that's not actually assigned to the school. So if we, if we were still splitting sometime with police officers, we would pick up the share that's outside of the school window and we would still pick up things like the uniforms and the vehicles and those.
But if the grant money is not there, then the schools would have to have, to have the full burden.
Correct.
Of having all, okay.
Correct, yep.
And if they are not able to, then they would.
Right, then you would reduce the number of SROs, yeah. Which is, you know, kind of the, the system we operated under before, which was, we had the number of SROs that between the city and the schools we could afford. And when there was a desire to actually increase the number of those, you know, that was when the state stepped in and said they would provide additional funds. And hopefully, they'll continue to do that.
Yeah, and would we, and not to say it would happen, but then would we have to pick it back up like we did before with, with police officers?
No, I think we, I think the desire is to move to the sheriff's folks, because it frees up officer, our officers to be out in the community with it. I think the intent is still to retain the high schools with police, but the others will most likely be sheriffs. And that's, that's something that the sheriff has wanted to do, that's something that the police chief supports. And as far as I know, something that in conversation with the schools, they're certainly supportive of also.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And then the last item again I had mentioned was the 50,000. And what this, what this intended, is intended to be is, so all of our directors have the ability to provide for performance of any of their employees as much as a 5% pay increase, separate and apart from anything else that we do. And then we could certainly do that with, with this also. I or the ACMs could award the directors up to a 5% pay increase based off of performance. However, I didn't want to do that without putting money in there to do that. And this is not proposed to take up to 5%. What ultimately this will be is based off of performance for the directors will be an increase, some kind of increase above that, that 3% that they otherwise will be receiving. That could be another 1%, it could be a flat amount, I don't know yet. That's something I still have to develop that I'll have ready for when the budget comes, comes forward with it. But it'll be capped at this 50,000, that's how much money we would have available. There's two things I'm trying to accomplish here, three things that I'm trying to accomplish here. One of those is, as I mentioned, we have not done a market rate adjustment for our directors. And so, and I'll share this with you all as we get further into the discussions with the budget. But when we, so we've run the comparisons of the average for the director positions across our, our competitors. And with the exception, I think, of three positions, three of which actually happened to be out of the comp board positions, that being the clerk of circuit court, the city treasurer, and the Commonwealth attorney. We are below the average in every single one of our directors. That's one reason is the ability to be able to attract and retain the directors in, in those roles. The second reason is, as we're having to pay and as we're thankfully able to give more money to our managers and other employees, they are starting to actually push up against our, our directors. In some cases, they're exceeding. You all know that in order to secure Chief Booth, Chief Booth is the second or third highest paid employee in this organization and technically, he's a director. He is significantly paid significantly more than the other directors, which is fine. That's what we needed to do to get him. But it's, it's creating pressure against the other directors and that's going to eventually hold back what we can actually bring managers and superintendents in because they're starting to get up against those directors. And then the third reason obviously is, we've always treated in the last several, gosh, at least since I've been here and probably before that, we've always treated the directors effectively equal. So it's always been directors all got 2%, they all got 1%, they all got 3%. And there was no recognition of any kind of difference in performance. And so this is also a way in which to recognize performance so that those directors that are performing duties, performing services in an excellent manner have a way in which to be recognized for that. So that's the intent for, for this particular item.
I do have a question when you mention your director. How many directors are we?
That's right, that was the number that, that Councilmember Whiteboy, and I, I'll have to get the number to you.
Oh, okay. Where I'm going with that is when I think of your directors and tenure, I don't, I'm just trying to see how can we equitably be trying to keep them at a salary equal to one another? If you have one that's been here 15, 20 years as a director, naturally, his salary or her salary would be higher.
Well, and actually, it's not. That's part of the problem. In order to attract new directors, we're actually having to bring new directors in at rates that may match or exceed those that have been here longer because, because of that fact, because they're, the competition that's in the market. Or, or we're actually turning away talent because we don't want to surpass the folks that we already have within the organization.
Yeah, but when I look at, I'll use the example which you just gave with the police chief, based on what his duties are and what he has to handle, I don't compare that to someone, let's say, over public works.
Sure.
I don't see how his salary, the public work salary should be comparable to what a police chief to come in to do, nor do I look at where the circuit court clerk, the Commonwealth attorney salary and the treasurer, when I look at how long they have been here and what the state is paying them to say, to bring a director up to. And as that changed, for instance, when the treasurer leaves, I, I will see that salary decreasing, which would probably make it comparable for a director.
And it may very well because of that piece, yeah.
Then it would carry up to 200 something.
And I actually agree with everything that you said. It would not be, there's not an intent to try to create parity, for example, between the police chief and the other directors because there is definitely a distinction. But let me give you an example. So the police chief, again, that hired in, hired in at $200,000. So our fire chief's current salary is 148,595.
Right.
That's a significant difference between two very, very similar positions. And we would not hire a new fire chief for $148,000 if Chief Hobak retired. The average with our comparisons is $169,000. So that's the piece we're trying to deal with. But yes, I wouldn't try to match, and even, to be honest, I mean, even the fire chief and police chief probably are not going to be on parity.
Not to put Chief Roman, Mr. Roman on the spot here, but when you hired him, what was his salary based on?
Significantly lower than that.
Right, and I was going to say compared to the fire chief. They were comparable at that time.
Yeah, we had, we had a history here of trying to keep our two chiefs at, at par with one another comparable. And that ultimately proved not sustainable as we moved into, like, without divulging kind of anything that was confidential at the time, the, the three individuals that made it into the final list for the chief, for the police chief, all three of those were making 40 to 50,000 more than the current chief in their current jobs. And that's just the market we're working in currently using those. So, and again, we'll have more information on this, I just wanted to kind of show you that. So all, all total, the compensation proposal, remember my eight, that 18 million dollars we showed you that was available for application into the budget? About 11 million of it is tied into compensation. So I think Councilmember Whiteboy, you had kind of asked sort of what will it be used for? We're going to talk more about what other things it's going to be used for, but in the list of priorities, compensation remains one of our top priorities. And that's why 11 of that 18 million dollars is ultimately proposed to go toward compensation.
Oh, but 8,000.
Was that?
I mean, oh, but 8 million is what you're going to be using pretty much.
For the other.
Or 7 million for salaries, I mean for compensation rather.
Bob, okay. I have a question.
Yes.
You said that if we were to hire a new fire chief today, we'll have to be at a higher than 148. What are we going to do from now until we get, if we have to get somebody else? Could we start increasing that salary so when the time comes, we don't have to be scrambling for money?
No, I mean, you know, it would be, you should do increases based off of cost of living, which is what the 3% is. And you should do increases if you have money available based off of performance. So if, if the chief, I feel like I'm picking on Chief Hobak. He's not even here. If the chief, if, he's not playing on leaving, just so everybody knows. So if the, you know, if the chief has excelled in the performance, then that allows us to kind of differentiate that somewhat. But no, I would not anticipate that you would build an incumbent's salary in anticipation of what you might need going, going forward. You just have to deal with that at that point in time. Which is what we did with the police chief. I mean, once we knew what that salary had to be set at, it still has to fit within the pay range for that, that pay. That's at the very upper end of that pay range. So no, I, I would not anticipate that you would. It's one of the, I guess, unfortunate things of being an incumbent is that, you know, you're, you're beholden to sort of those incremental increases, which are a bit, you know, when you're coming in new, you get to kind of set the price with it, or promoting. You know, some of our promotions also are somewhat, are, have in the past been held back also, we're trying to break through that as well. So if, an example is if, if a director left and we had the ability to promote, but I also knew that if somebody had come from outside, they were going to command a certain salary, I don't know that it's appropriate, simply because they're getting promoted within, that we hold them back financially as to what an outside applicant could make. So we also try to look at those, at those items.
That's good to hear. I was thinking it's good to promote within.
Absolutely, and we've been, we've been pretty successful of being able to get a good blend of those, but I just don't like the idea of, you shouldn't be penalizing someone who got promoted within because their salary happened to be lower and therefore we didn't have to pay what the market actually is, is driving. And that's, part of all of this is based off of us doing kind of a quick kind of market assessment of where are the directors out across our region and out across our competition. It is a little harder because in fairness, most of our directors are competing at a national level, not just in the immediate region, but we're using just the immediate region to try to actually see if we can start setting those salaries. But we're not, not talking about anything significantly different at this point, that may come. Right now, it's just really saying, hey, if there's money to do some performance adjustments, we'll, we'll take a shot at that. All right?
Thank you.
And we're going to move to balancing, and that's Brent, so.
Just for a moment.
Just for a moment, that's right.
Good mornings.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be here with you today. As Bob has mentioned, touched upon where we've spent a lot of time thus far, compensation. If we look at our at our slide here, you see Roanoke City Public Schools, Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, top of our schools top priority that we have. And the Virginia's Blue Ridge exploits our natural beauty, our visitor convention and visitors bureau. I'm having a hard time talking this morning after the holiday. Now, though, as he, Bob mentioned, that one of the top expenditure priorities of compensation, those are people and we are a service organization. It's very important. However, there's a lot of things as well that we have to look at. If you look at the slide, you'll see the ongoing departmental requests, the one-time departmental request, and some external agencies that we have been working through, really pretty, pretty significantly beginning around December or so with the departments. And you have a lot of the budget staff here today that's been doing a lot of that legwork, working with the departments, doing analysis. But as you see here, the preliminary balance, balancing status will jump right to the bottom. You'll see we're around $1 million, excuse me, still out of balance as we work through. We've got a number of areas that we are still working through. As you go from the top, you'll see the new revenue projected that Jason had reviewed with you. The school share and the Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge share, when that comes out, that points back. I believe that was Slide 7 that Bob had a little earlier that indicated about $18 million that we're looking at for additional allocation. So you come to our $10 million eight of compensation. Then you look at the departmental request, both one-time and ongoing. About $6 million of ongoing requests, and we have some staff here that are going to review some of the illustrations. We obviously can't go through every item. It's been extensive and in-depth. And you'll see the one-time departmental requests, and we segregate those out separately just so you understand that we tend to tie one-time revenues or one-time resources to those. We do not build, try to, if at all costs, not to build into a budget a recurring cost that we use one-time revenues to cover. So we'll review some of those with you as well. Once again, we still have a little over $700,000 in external agencies pending to come out with right now. We've got a $24.7 million kind of in our expenditure bucket that we're looking to scoop out the last little bit to equal our revenues.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to what Brent's showing on this slide is so where we will balance, where we will get in balance, so where that $1 million is coming from, those three pending items, basically, you know, that's where we'll be. Because again, I want to, to the extent practically, I don't want to impact compensation. And so it's going to come from the discretionary items within those ongoing departmental requests, the one-time department requests, and the external agencies funding. So that's how we'll close, that's how we plan on closing that gap.
Right. And as you recall, we've spent a lot of time on capital and we've got, for the most part, a proposed capital budget five-year plan. I think Ian is here to review or answer any questions you have. Cory is here to look at some of the operating costs and requests that we have considered along the way to date. So I'll turn this over to Cory.
Yeah, and as Cory walks you through these, I want to be able, and he may already say this, I may be preempting part of what he was going to say. But just as, what we're showing you on these is these are representative examples of the items that we're anticipating moving forward with. But again, we haven't balanced yet, so some things may change on this. But it is not an exhaustive list. You'll get that obviously on April 15th. You'll see all of the items that were approved. But we wanted to start sharing with you and showing you some of those departmental and external agency requests that right now look like something that we're moving forward with. So that's the intent of these next several slides.
Thanks, Bob. Good morning, members of City Council, Mayor. Thank you for your time today. As Bob said, we want to share with you a few of the ongoing and one-time departmental requests that we hope to be able to fund but are still pending at this point. City Council Training, an increase of $17,500, which represents a $2,500 increase for each one of y'all. Into the General Services Department, we have auto insurance to offset the cost of the claims that we've been experiencing, $105,000 is the cost on that one. In the Solid Waste Group, we have an increase of $100,000 for temporary wages to supplement our full-time employees in that group. We have the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority Solid Waste Tipping Fees, an item for $103,000.
And Cory, if I can, for that, on the tipping fee, just again, most of you probably know this. But as I mentioned earlier, of course, we charge for solid waste. And so it's not uncommon that if we see an experience on tipping fees, that's the cost it costs the city to actually deposit the refuse at the regional landfill, often that would result in an increase in the in the charge for that service. However, our our target, the target that council's established is to have about 50% of the cost of that service covered by the charge. And we're still at that number. We're still right at around 50%. So we are not proposing any change in that in that service fee. But there is an additional cost associated with it. And we just monitor that each year, trying to maintain that 50% number.
Thank you, Bob. Moving along, staying in the General Services Group, Fleet Management specifically, we have, we're proposing $300,000 to expand the snow truck rental program. We actually established this last year and had some good results. So this is the incremental cost to expand that program.
When you talk about your snow truck rental, is that just where you are increasing the amount to be able to rent in case there is a big snow or?
Yes. So last year, we had 11 rentals, just to kind of start the program, see how it did. And this $300,000 is to move from 11 to 20 vehicles. So and to get rid of the dedicated snow fleet in-house entirely, get rid of those vehicles and rent exclusively.
Which saves, you have a savings on insurance, wear and tear, maintenance.
Right.
If you do that.
You'd have that because a lot of those dedicated snow vehicles sit year-round.
Yeah.
And it costs a lot to get them up and ready.
Do you have a cost that are savings that you would, once you come out of that and just look at solely renting, what the insurance savings on insurance, maintenance? I'm just trying to see the.
Yeah, I think we could, I think we can get for you, the reality is the equipment that we have is basically all in a state of needing to be replaced. So what we could share with you is what the replacement costs of those vehicles would be in contrast to the rental costs. So yes, yes, we can get that.
Okay, because I'm just curious to see what the savings really comes down to.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, we'll get that for you.
On the solid waste temporary wages increase, is that for the temporary employees or does a?
Temporary employees.
It is, and it's not for an increase in their pay. It's for the cost associated with those positions. So it's historic, so for a couple of our departments, solid waste is one of those, parks is another one. We rely on a temp agency to bring employees in to supplement those that are our full-time employees. And and all of those folks have been raised up to the $15 an hour also when we did the other piece of, even though they work for a private company, we require them to pay them the same equivalent $15 an hour or more if they're drivers. But what we've historically done is as we get, as we were more and more fully staffed and as those temp wait, or those temp employees came in, the dollars that were available for them weren't enough dollars to actually cover all those positions. So what's happening in the departments is they're actually having to take money out of other budget categories to fund those. This is starting to work so that we're actually accurately accounting for those dollars. So that we're actually putting enough money in to pay the temp wages rather than the departments having to spend other money that they'd be using for other purposes to pay those. So that's what this is. It doesn't fully cover it, but it's moving in that direction.
Okay. Because the temporary workers get their salary is higher than a regular worker, than a full-time worker.
The the part that the company provides is, it isn't necessarily because of what we actually provide for because they set those salaries for that company. And it's partly to offset, they don't get benefits. So they have no pension, they have no other benefits.
Thank you. So in essence with that, although they may make $17 or $18 an hour as a temporary employee, as you just said, they don't get the fringe benefits of being a permanent employee nor do they pick up any of the other benefits. They're only there temporarily, maybe a week or so, and then they're back out.
Yeah, and they're they're pretty consistent as our employees. As a matter of fact, you all may know, a number of years ago, you know, I was interested, maybe still am interested, in trying to move those folks into full-time employment. It's extremely expensive because of all of the extra benefits. And most of them, the indication was that they were not interested in that.
Right, because of the money they can make.
Yeah, because the pension, you know, of course, pulls some of that money away. So you're not losing that piece. So does healthcare pull some of it away. It was just, you know, I just personally have a challenge with two people on a truck doing the exact same job. And one has benefits and one doesn't have benefits. But it, you know, that is kind of how it's structured.
Do you have a large turnover, high turnover in solid waste?
We did. It's actually stabilized since the pay increases have been put in place. So we're we're doing fairly well in maintaining those those positions. You still need the temp workers because you still have people out on leave or sick or those kinds of things. But in terms of FTEs, we're in a much better position than we were.
All right. Moving on. In the Department of Technology, we are establishing a multi-factor authentication program at a cost of $239,000, along with some Microsoft licensing in that one. In the Environmental Management Group, we have homeless encampment cleanup, increasing roughly $68,000.
Cory, question on that. What's the status of the like number of cleanups that we're having to do? Are we seeing a reduction in that? Are we seeing an increase? What, in addition to these cleanups, and this is a longer conversation, we can have another time. But I'm just curious about other strategies to to just reduce the cost of doing the encampment cleanups.
Well, we're definitely seeing an increase right now. I can tell you that much. I was a member of the Star City Innovators Group, and they have some efforts going, and they were heavily involved in those conversations. But I don't think there are any other strategies at this point that I'm aware of. So.
I think the only other, probably the only strategy we've put in place in the last year to try to lower these costs is to catch them sooner. So we have folks, for example, the park staff does routine checks in the parks and along the greenways and those because the thinking is the sooner we can identify them as a camp, the less chance there is for them to grow. And you all know, we've even gone to extremes. We've actually acquired two properties in order to offset these costs because then we can control them. We haven't had to clear a camp, for example, at the airport roadside since we acquired it. So, yeah, so those are things that we're trying to to do. But even that tool is going to be very limited as to our ability. But Cory's right. I mean, we're definitely continuing to see an increase with with the camps. And it's not just us. I mean, actually, we're starting to see camps actually happening in Roanoke County and in Salem also. And they're having to address those.
This is also where I would say, you know, we should be looking into things like, again, transitional housing. When we're having to pay, what, a quarter of a million dollars every year just to get rid of encampments? If we can create something like the least of these, as it started to do out in Roanoke County, even just a parking lot where we can have folks that come, that live in their cars, that can go to. I think just those types of small things, if we can start to provide those, because as you said, the number is not going down, it's going up. And, you know, we have to do something other than just putting more money at it.
Yeah, and we've, and you all know, because you've authorized this. I mean, alongside this, of course, is you have increased the expenditures on supportive housing, on the development of housing, even even as recently as the zoning code amendments. Those are all part of trying to solve this thing upstream. But it is definitely still a challenge, most definitely. What, you know, most of the folks that we're encountering in these encampments are currently being serviced by the HAT team, meaning they've had some kind of interaction with them. Of course, in the last two years, HAT teams provided housing for over 200 individuals. There just is still this group of folks who are unable or uninterested in getting into housing that we kind of keep moving from place to place. And part of the concern is whether they would even, so far, they've not been interested even in supportive housing kind of opportunities and stuff. But but yes, that has to be a part of this, too. It can't just be us chasing people around cleaning up camps. So maybe we have to keep our focus on those other things.
You may not get everybody, but you'll get some, and we need a reduction.
Okay. I was going to say, this increase you have leading up to the $175,000, is that for outsourcing to to clean up or is that cities' resources using employees?
Yeah, the majority of this is outsourced part. So, you know, a lot of these camps, we have to actually contract with someone to deal with hazardous materials, either because of drugs that are present, drug paraphernalia that's present, or even human waste. And so we've got to deal with that. So, yeah, there is actually an additional cost here associated with our own personnel that are involved in this as well.
And just like you said, it is a challenge, but I, and as they move to regional, I think there's opportunities there on the regional level to bring in resources to try to, because now it's affecting other localities and they now can't say, oh, it's only a city problem. They are having to recognize that they have those same challenges and they are seeking help on how to, how can they be able to handle the encampments in their locality?
And I think you all know, it's actually our HAT team that actually responds to those calls for assistance in other jurisdictions because we represent kind of a regional.
So would they be, is there, is there opportunities for money, funds that come from them to go toward the HAT team to have more employees?
I would absolutely welcome that. That is a conversation that the Council of Community Services has has had and I think needs to continue to have, if no other place, through the support of the HAT outreach because it is the only outreach team that exists in the region. And so wherever they are, and if they need that outreach, that's going to come from our folks, which is all locally paid and also our share of ESG funds that come from from HUD. So yes, we would, we would absolutely welcome.
Well, we need to, if that's the case, then then to use city resources to help out a local, local, locality, adjacent localities to help clean up their encampments.
Now, we don't clean up the encampments.
Or to assist them with services rather. And they benefit from it. Yeah.
Let's send them a bill.
Yes, I was going to say that. You took the words out of my mouth.
Yeah, I would be happy if we could get one of our outreach workers share paid by other partners in the region. That would be a start.
Yeah.
I was just going to add to that, that the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS, is also, the Council of Community Services is seeking additional funding to be able to upgrade that software program, which is a comprehensive database that makes sure that everyone who is seen by the HAT team, by any of our shelter programs, are getting the supportive services they need. And I know outreach is being made to localities to contribute to that because historically they have not. So that that's a preventative measure that they can also contribute to.
Because I had a conversation with someone over the weekend, and I knew it, but he confirmed it. And it was just eye-opening for me to hear him say it, was from another locality up near, with Veal. And because of the services that they are not able to provide, they bring their patients or residents here for services, and they leave them here. So that was very discerning to me because they don't come back or they don't encourage them to come back. They are here on the street trying to get help or don't want help. And they just add into the mix of those that are homeless. And I just looked at it.
Yeah, we're definitely aware of at least one instance recently that actually resulted in some police action associated with that, that was that scenario.
But that was just troubling when he didn't have a problem with saying it. Like, oh, yes, we, you know, you offer the services we don't have. And I wanted to ask, how come you don't try to get the services up at that end?
Yeah, and I think, you know, Matt Crookshank has, I think, shared this with you all before. But the last point in time count that was completed, not the most recent, but the one prior to it that was completed, somewhere around 40% of those that are in our city who are experiencing homelessness became homeless outside of our city.
Yeah.
And the majority of that isn't far outside our city. It's Roanoke County, Salem, Bonnettock County, Allegheny County. That's where they became homeless. And and ended up here because there aren't services in those in those jurisdictions.
And let me say, that's been going on for years.
Yeah, and it has.
For years. That's something, even in the criminal justice system, they put them on a bus and send them to Roanoke. So that's something that that.
Yeah, just trying to see if there's some way of getting some regionalism in here to help. Because if 40% is not, then that's just added on expense for the burden for the city to have and not able to use the resources toward other things that we need to take care of.
And and also would hope that those jurisdictions would also take some of the other steps that you all have taken that would actually address the issues upstream. Because there's a reason those folks are becoming homeless, usually because they can't find affordable housing in those jurisdictions, usually because they have an addiction to trying to address or deal with, or they may be a victim of domestic violence. And so making certain that those services are actually available and addressed in those localities lessens the chance that they ever become homeless and end up here. So it's not, so it's both helping regionally address the issue of homelessness, but also locally, each of those jurisdictions doing their part to lessen the chance that people actually become homeless.
Ms. Moon Reynolds, being on that commission, you all had that conversation?
I was going to say, we have had that conversation. And I think, Bob, you could help me with this. I think there's conversations from the county managers and the city managers to be, are talking about that now, looking at it from the regional.
Yeah, there is. The administrators all meet once a month. And in the last meeting, actually, was a discussion with the Regional Commission about roles that regionally need to be addressed to try to. I will say that, you know, most of that discussion seems to be focused around the, sort of the eviction prevention, sort of keeping people in housing, which is great. I mean, it's an upstream. But it really needs to be kind of at all ends of that spectrum. And and really trying to address this regionally, not just locally.
Because I know one of the county board minister, county board supervisors, and I had that same conversation, looking at it from the regional side, as well as, I think, in the Tidewater area. That's where they teamed up. The localities in that area saw the same thing going from locality to locality. And they started looking at working jointly to try to find some solutions to meet those challenges.
Okay, to the Police Department, we have $40,000 increase for some leadership training. We have employee wellness visits for $20,000, which was previously grant-funded, and a re-establishment of the deer culling program for $40,000.
If I may, Mayor, just wanted to note the deer culling. This past year, we had $60,000 for it, didn't we?
No, this is the same amount that we had.
Oh, $40,000? Well, either way, I think it needs to go up.
I was going to say, $40,000, I love.
Because what we missed in COVID is an exponential increase in deer, because I can tell you right now that the herd that lives in my family has grown at least twice as large. So, if we can, even just for one year, try and catch up on those bad boys.
Well, did you say, in my family, it's creepy?
Well, they've become domesticated now. They even stop when they see cars coming, they back up.
They walk out, like, they walk it out.
So, and that wild deer, they're domesticated now, they don't know what to do when traffic is there.
Yeah, you know.
How much more would make a real difference, though, because we don't want to really?
Probably about five times that amount.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so do we really want to just?
Yeah, I mean, the hunters, you know, the firm that we've used has indicated for years, even before COVID, that the amount that we provide, they could do three, four, five times that amount and stuff. Yeah, it's, it is a large number of deer in the community.
Yeah, this is a slow process, I think they.
If you keep it low, then it's never going to get anywhere close to where it needs to be, though.
Well, but you gotta look at all.
Gotta just slowly go up.
Yeah, well, yeah, you gotta look at other.
I guess technically, it is going from zero, because we actually had zero.
Exactly.
But yes, I mean, I've made a note that we'll look at, is there a way, even if it's a one-time supplement, is there a way to supplement that?
Yeah, just, you know.
Cory, you're fine, you got the floor, we're just talking about issues that we get phone calls from.
In my backyard, I haven't seen you in my backyard, I might have a different conversation, but I think that's their problem, so we don't need. She'll get, she'll be calling and saying, let's increase the money.
I know, I'm saying, let's get, suck up the leaves, is what I'm saying. You go ahead, Cory.
Oh, you're good, anything else, I'm.
We got to contain ourselves before we fall asleep, we get to look at it, yeah.
All right, on from the deer culling. Economic development, $50,000 to the Financial Empowerment Center, which provides free financial counseling services, was previously funded through grants.
And so, you're saying it's no longer going, you're going to increase it by the $50,000 that was previously funded?
Yeah, there are still grant funds in it, we're just starting to wind ourselves down off of the grants, so.
And do you have a way of showing the benefit from it?
Sure, yeah, we can absolutely.
Because I'm just curious, just to see, over the time, it's been, you know, how that's.
Yeah, every once in a while.
I've heard the presentation, but I'm still not quite there.
Yeah, Brandon will do, every once in a while, Brandon will collect that information, and we certainly can do that again. I mean, they keep pretty good data on the amount, so that what they look at are the number of people who benefit from, or who actually attend counseling sessions, the amount of personal debt that is reduced, the amount of savings that is increased, the change in their credit rating status, or that, those tend to be the performance measures that they track. So, yeah, I can have them update those, so.
I'm just looking for that ongoing of some of those who have been in it for a while, to see their progress, how they're progressing and where they're at, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll still continue to pursue grants. We just know that some of the grants that we have were for a fixed time, and then you have to rotate off of those.
Okay, in the Community Engagement Group, $300,000 for a couple of various items. Star City Safe, Youth and Gang Violence Prevention, a lot of crime prevention and intervention efforts there.
And this is really kind of the beginning of, you know, most of our ARPA programs, when they end, they end. This is one that we're not intending on ending, so we're winding off of ARPA, and this is our effort to try to sustain that, those programs as they move forward.
And this is the Star City Safe, when that is the whole of government?
Yes, yes, yeah, and this is also Chris Roberts and his group.
Right, that's where the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention, etc., okay.
Mr. Howell, will that include some sort of salary for some of Chris's staff? Because some of them were saying they were still in volunteer mode.
There are still definitely volunteers, like Reset, for example, is volunteer, but there's mentors, and I'm going off memory here, there are mentors that are both volunteer and also mentors that we contract with, that get paid out of these programs. All of Chris's actual staff is paid, so there's, which is, there's only two positions that are assigned to that group, one of which is filled. One of those is still on a grant, I believe, is that right?
Yes, so, well, Chris's positions are still under grant. One of them is what we will eventually be able to come full-time, and then that, that's it at this point. The, we do have the mentors, and you know, he contracts with Mr. Nichols, but that, so all of that would be part of this.
So, but you're still looking at one full-time in addition to Chris?
Correct, and we'll probably be looking at that as, that will be coming off of grant funds. So, those are mostly, that's DCJS funding, and as that ends, then we'll be including that in, into the general fund. So, kind of similar to what we did with Reset, so when Lloyd got hired on Reset, it was under a DCJS grant. After that grant ran out, then we actually secured general fund dollars to keep him on permanently. Did the same thing with Chris, with the DCJS funds, and now we're actually transitioning to at least one of those outreach workers that has, that Chris has, being on general fund, coming off of DCJS. Again, we'll keep pursuing DCJS grants if they become available, we're just not sure how likely that is as we continue to progress. Although, the one significant occurrence in General Assembly, if everything holds, is, you know, the inclusion of the city of Roanoke in one of the programs that is a large funding program to deal with violence interruption that had previously excluded Roanoke, that now includes Roanoke. So, we don't know exactly how much funding will come from that, but that's funding that could be used for these purposes also.
Okay, I was at the, whatever you all did, Angie, at the Harrison, and Fletcher Nichols seems a little bit perplexed, because he thought that a lot more of those individuals should have been paid. And I was sitting there, and I wasn't really familiar with the situation, so I didn't really know what to say, but he kind of, you know, made it plain that we, with this program working as effectively as it has been, that there should be some funding someplace, and so I was just wondering if this is going to be enough in order to do it, because apparently, based on those conversations, it seems to be, we are making some progress.
Yeah, and to.
Angie, come on up to the mic a little bit.
That comment that I think Mr. Nichols was talking about is the outreach workers, and those outreach worker staff are part of that 205 employees.
Employees, oh, okay, 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 so they would be.
Yes, ma'am.
Paid, okay, because he made it seem like they weren't getting paid, and people are gasping for air, and I was sitting there like, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I think the only, I think the only folks in the whole program that currently are not being compensated are the Reset volunteers. I don't know if we have.
Right, well, Reset volunteers, but the comment that Mr. Nichols was talking about are the two outreach worker staff, who, right now, they are below the new target minimum. So, there's two employees right now, only one of those positions is filled, so there's two positions, only one is filled, and that is Jabari. But both of those two positions are below that new target minimum.
So, you think Jabari is going to be one, well, if he applies?
That position is one of the.
That position?
205.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry I didn't have that information at the time, I would have gotten up and said something, because I hate having that misinformation just going out into the atmosphere, but I appreciate you clarifying it here. Thank you.
And Bob, I was trying to remember, what was the title of the new position that you got through the grant? For Gun, I think it's one, another one?
Yeah, it's, it's the, I'm going to call it a coordinator, it's a Violence Interruption Coordinator.
That's right, yes.
That's the DCJS grant, and if you remember, we're actually trying to kind of dual-purpose that role. So, DCJS has given that, given us dollars to be able, for the couple of years, to hire a coordinator that will coordinate all of these efforts. We're also using them as, will be using them as the project manager for the Attorney General's Program, which is the Group Violence Intervention Program, the GVI Program. So, they'll do kind of dual-purpose with it, but at least for those first couple of years, it'll be DCJS-funded, although we would fully expect two years, three years from now, we'll be looking at needing to bring that on general funds, so.
And have you started the hiring process?
We did, maybe we made an offer, and the offer was not accepted. This falls into our category of our ability to compete based off of our salary, so we will be starting over with that again, so, yeah. But we will, we'll be going through recruitment again on that.
So, you didn't have, so with the applications, there was only one possible, one, none others kind of fell to the wayside.
What's that? You're, she's giving me a code here, so.
I'm actually speaking with a clue.
Okay, okay.
That's what I was asking, if there's a one and a two, you know, that you go to.
Yeah, the hesitation, my part is, ironically, the number two gets paid currently, not only significantly more than we offer, but significantly more than what the person would have been offering.
That you were offering.
But, but he seems committed, so we'll see.
So, Mr. Howell, just one question, and I know we need to move on, Mayor, so with $300,000, I know some will be allocated for salaries, etc., will that also be used for some of the grant programs, some of the funding?
The majority of this money will actually be used for the activities that.
For the activities.
For the whole government that we do, so the work we do at the libraries, the work we do at Parks and Recreation, the work we do with BoxFit, the mentoring, that's what the majority of this will go towards.
And so, we will use that same process that we've used in the past, so it's going to be a whole.
These are all city-run.
Right, so it's going to have to be a different process, correct?
Yeah, these are not grants, these are all city-run.
City, okay, okay, well, not BoxFit, but.
What's that?
BoxFit.
The BoxFit one that we use, not the, so we have a BoxFit program with Reset that we actually.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
We pay kids to go to there and stuff.
Where you go to Reset.
Yeah, we do the same thing with the YMCA also.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, BoxFit has a separate program that they've competed for grants for previously.
Okay, I see that, okay.
In the Parks and Recreation Group, we have an effort that, this year, that we are going to pull back 50% of the increase in the city share of the transient occupancy tax, and hold it back for regional outdoor recreation maintenance and enhancement efforts.
Yeah, so let me kind of talk a little bit on this, and then I'll also mention another piece in Parks and Recreation that's not on here. So, as Cory's mentioned, this is, this is the first time we're trying to do this. So, if you recall, and you'll see this a little bit later, too, in the CIP discussion, remember we identified the equivalent of 1% of the CIP that would be used to be able to address our climate action objectives with our buildings? So, anything we built under the CIP, there would be a pool of funds that would grow, so we could use that to put in charging stations, solar, those kinds of things. One of the other similar things that's been talked about quite some time by the region is this inability to actually fund the maintenance and enhancement of regional outdoor recreation facilities. So, think of things like the greenways, the trails at Carvin's Cove, stuff out at Explore Park, some trails on Mill Mountain, these things that are regional attractors, that by and large, we either get grant-funded to install, and then we rely on volunteers to maintain, and it's just increasingly not sustainable. The region is still struggling with how to come up with a solution for this. This is, this is my effort at trying to start that here locally. So, what we're talking about doing is, as I think Brent had mentioned in the revenue piece, or as Jason actually mentioned, we're seeing pretty good growth in the year-over-year increase for the, out of our transient tax, our occupancy tax. This is not the part that goes to VBR, this is the part we get for that. And what we're saying is, let's take half of that growth, put it into a bucket that then will accumulate, so that we can actually use it to actually maintain those kinds of regional facilities, which means, instead of taking money out of our parks budget to fix a part of the greenway that broke, we can use this funding for that. So, that's our first effort, and, you know, in some ways, I kind of hope that our regional partners will take a similar step as we continue to look for other options to fund these types of activities. But right now, the growth is healthy, so it's actually generating a decent amount of money. The other thing I want to mention on Parks and Recreation is, you won't see it in this list that Cory's going through, but just so everybody knows, so we are beginning the ramp-up for our new facilities. So, we'll have, obviously, the new pool, we'll have the new Eureka Center coming online over the next couple of years, and those are going to require additional staff from what we have currently. So, this budget, you'll see, will start that process with hiring one or two positions. Pool doesn't open until the end of the fiscal year, Eureka won't open until the following. So, you'll see over the next couple of years, you're going to see some increases in staffing in order to be able to do those. I just didn't want anybody to kind of, we're going to figure out a way to actually show that in the budget, so that it doesn't get kind of lost in the discussion with it. It won't be funded except for a couple of those positions, but we want to start setting the stage for those positions that we'll need for those facilities as they come online.
I do have a question, since you mentioned the pool. Will we be receiving any updates on the programs that you'll have for the summer, for Washington Park, for the youth? I know you were talking about working on what would be put in place, but I didn't know where you were in that.
Yeah, we should have those all set, I think, so we can definitely send that update to you all.
Yeah, I think the public would like to hear that as well, what the plan is for the children over in that area.
Yeah, most definitely. And we're actually also starting to work similarly on the Eureka, because Eureka Recreation Central will be closed for part of the time, they're just doing construction, so we're similarly working on steps to ensure that we can continue to have programming during that period of time.
Yeah, okay.
In the Sheriff's Department, we have $25,000 for a forklift to handle deliveries over at the jail. In the Fire EMS Department, we have ballistic vests that we have to replace for $100,000. Over in Transportation, Public Works, we have some guard rail replacement costs, $100,000, for a total of 542 grand, as well as some de-icing chemical replenishments of $180,000, which are part of a VDOT contract. If there are no questions there, we'll move on to the external agencies. So, again, these represent the increases over the prior year that we hope to be able to fund. A lot of these are formula-driven. Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare, $196,000. Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection.
Is this the increase, the amount that we're looking at, that's what it's going to be increased to?
Uh, no, this represents.
Looking at the percentage of them receiving in addition to what they get now?
Yeah, this is the amount above and beyond the base.
That's what I'm saying, than the base, okay, wow, okay.
So, $507,000 for the, for RCACP, Roanoke Valley Television, 16 grand. Williamson Road Area Service District Tax, roughly $21,000. Downtown Area Service District Tax, $17,734. The Virginia Cooperative Extension, 4,400 increase. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, again, that's formula-driven, part of the transient occupancy tax. And the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission, 37 grand. And lastly, the Roanoke Regional Small Business Development Center, roughly $19,000.
And as Cory mentioned on these, these are, one, again, these are representative, they're not the exhaustive lists. There are a number of other discretionary ones that we're working our way through currently, so you'll, of course, be seeing the full list. But all those things that we just went through, while those are intense at this point, again, we're still a million dollars out of balance, and these are the areas that we'll look to in order to balance the budget. So, I would expect some of these will change as we move forward. But again, these are only representative, there's a whole nother list alongside these that may change, and you may not even see some of them, because they may get eliminated.
And you said these are percentage-driven amounts based on?
A lot of them are formula-driven, yes.
Okay, formula-driven. With the reason, just like with the animal care, I appreciate that. I guess my question is, what are the other regions paying in?
Significantly less, because it's based on demand. So, we overwhelmingly provide the majority of animals into that facility. Our residents overwhelmingly use this facility more than the other partners in the region do.
Is the RCACP, sorry, I want to make sure that's right, is that a formula-based increase, or is that some kind of other kind of increase?
It's based on, I think, the animal population days. I think it's in arrears, basically, based on the last year, and they set the new budgets, is that correct, Trinity? Based on, and to Bob's point, our numbers continue to go up as far as the greater percentage of that.
Okay, thank you.
So, we no longer have the Roanoke City SPCA? And you use the regional now, the regional center?
The SPCA, I believe, is still operating as a partner, connected to the building. They've got, from what I understand, very good relationship built with them, as well as the Angels of Assisi as well. So, we really have a good program going with the three of them in partnership, along with many of their other foster groups out and around. So, I think this is just a function of kind of the rising cost and how the formula is currently in agreement.
Thank you, Brent. Any other questions?
And on the district tax, on both of those, what exactly do you get for this increase, or even what they have in their baseline amount? What is the service district tax?
So, those are, those, of course, are taxes that are self-imposed. So, property owners within those districts have an additional tax levied on them, and then those, so that's why we just pass it through, we collect it, and then we pass it through to them. They then, in turn, have a board, so like Downtown Roanoke Inc. has a board.
Right, like RABA, RABA gets the money, and what do they use the money for?
Well, in the case of RABA, you're going to actually hear that later.
I know, I saw them on the agenda.
So, it's really going to be, you know, based on what they, what they show in their annual reports with it, and their annual work programs. But obviously, in the case of DRI, a lot of that has to do with programming activities, landscape care, those kinds of things in downtown. RABA is a lot of promotion about the area, and again, things that Val will share with you all with it, but.
I'll talk to her about that, because I can see what Downtown Roanoke is doing. Uh, uh, I'll, I'll talk to her about that, because I can see what Downtown Roanoke is doing. It's obvious with the, with the money.
Yeah. Yeah, our, our role for these is really.
Ambassadors and all.
Yeah, we really collect the money and pass it forward because it is, it is district imposed. You all had to put those districts in place back when, when you established them, but once they're established, we don't, unlike VBR, there's no share of that that comes to us. It's just money that goes straight to those districts.
Okay.
We're going to transition then into the CIP. So, Ian is going to, um, kind of walk you through it. One thing I would ask, um, in the interest of time and getting us to the item that you really wanted to talk about on the CIP, the first several slides that Ian's going to show you are just a, a revisit of the five-year, um, CIP. And the last slide that she'll come to is actually the one that talks about the prioritized unmet needs.
Yeah.
So, if you could, if it would be okay, if you could hold questions on the five-year items until we get to the unmet needs.
Good morning, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Kup and City Council member. Of course, Bob just mentioned the FY twenty-five to, uh, FY twenty-nine CIP. We already briefed council, uh, back in February. Can you hear me okay?
Put it down a little bit.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Yes, thank you. So, for the CIP, FY twenty-five to twenty-nine, we already briefed you all back in February and early March. So, um, of course, right now, um, no changes on those listings, so we won't go, um, in detail on those. And, of course, um, they will be part of our adopted budget, um, for April, I mean, for the recommended budget in, uh, April, on April the fifteenth. And, of course, we meant, um, Bob shared with you all that, um, City Council normally only authorize and approve for one CIP year. So, for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, you all will authorize for CIP for twenty-twenty-five only. And for the future year, for the FY twenty-six to twenty-nine, they pretty much mainly the placeholder. And, of course, they are subject to change as well. So, now, um, let's see, so, of course, for, for these, um, items that I would just share with you all, um, the slide twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, it's just a recap of what we already briefed you on.
On this slide, the one thing I did want to highlight, Ian, is, um, because this is the kind of the total slide. So, just as a reminder, that in total, over the course of the five years that are mentioned in the CIP, we're anticipating a little over two-hundred-and-eighty-one million dollars, um, being spent, of which a hundred and ninety-one million of that is anticipated through debt and the rest through cash and grants, um, with it. But, just to give a sense of all of the items that Ian has in the, in the five-year CIP, kind of total up to that amount, all things being equal, which they won't be, stuff will change over those five years, but that's effectively what we're trying to do with it.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um, now, I would like to draw your attention to slide number twenty-five and twenty-six. Of course, uh, you can see for the, uh, for the two slides, twenty-five, twenty-six, the title we call is additional capital needs. Um, pretty much, they are currently remaining unfunded. That means that they are not currently in our CIP, uh, for the five-year planning. We, and of course, in DMB, myself have been working closely with our City Engineer Luke and Director of Public Works, Ross, and Katie from Port and Rapids. We, um, we met, uh, quite a few times, um, go over, review these listing of projects that currently unfunded. And in order to come up with the method of how we want to share with you all, we evaluate this, these project and come up with the method, come up with the three different priority. Um, so, in order to come up with whether it's a high priority, a medium priority, a low priority for the project, we, um, based on the urgency for the project, if any, um, also, we also look at the estimate project cost. And, of course, we also look at the scope of the work and also the timeline as well. And in interest of time, I won't be, go over with every single one of these. Um, what I will do is I will pause for a few moments to give you a chance to review this listing. And myself, Luke, and Ross, and Katie are here, um, to answer any question you may have. And, of course, if you don't have any question for today, if you have any other question after this briefing, please feel free to reach, um, to one of us and we'd be glad to provide any additional information you might have. So, I give powerful few moments.
I will add that as you, as you look at these lists and ask questions, um, even though, you know, these are obviously all listed as unfunded right now, so we haven't identified, you know, we will continue even with this list as well as the stuff that's in the five-year CIP. If, if there are grant funds that appear to be applicable or other opportunities, we're going to continue to pursue those opportunities. It's just, at this moment, we have not identified funding sources for, um, for any of these projects that fit within our five-year CIP. Now, again, we'll be building New Years each year as we go forward, um, and some of these projects may end up in those, um, future lists.
Yeah, and, and that's, that was, you know, the comment earlier that right now, none of these part of the five-year CIP.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, on the elevator replacements, are those for city-owned buildings? Does that also include our city, the parking garages or does that come out of the separate?
Yeah, the parking ones will come out of the parking enterprise, so this is just in the city buildings.
Just in the city buildings, okay.
On fire station number eight replacement, do you have a spot for the fires?
We do not. Um, so, first step in that process would be to actually acquire land. Um, and then your next steps will be similar to what we're doing with the fire station on Williamson Road. We acquired the land first and then went through the process of design and then ultimately construction, but right now, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
And one, one other question on the Adult Detention Center, are these like comprehensive improvements? I'm, I'm sure we probably break down of.
For different phases, yeah, for the jail, for the other.
Yeah, because I know there, there are a lot of outdated.
Yeah, and we, we are currently going through, of course, we've just finished the kitchen, um, uh, work in there. We can finish the, uh, the access to the Sally Court. We're working on the magistrate's office in the front of it. The, these are, um, and I, and I suspect, um, that these, this number is probably greatly understated. So, we're going through an assessment right now by a third party to evaluate what are those needs. As you said, some of those needs are things that have broken. Some of those needs are just that contemporary design is done differently, so it needs to be different. And some of those are, um, things that simply need to be upgraded. And so, we're going to capture those and, and few of these items I should mention, and this is one of them, are very likely to come back as some kind of future briefing or workshop discussion because there's, there's going to be some fairly significant decisions made with some of these. The most immediate will actually be, I'll be sending out to you, I'll be looking for a time to meet this summer to talk about, um, Jefferson Center and the Burgland Civic Center. Um, so that's an example of, and I could certainly imagine a time at which we're going to talk about the Adult Detention Center. Because if those dollars continue to increase, um, we're going to have to have a conversation about what's the right path forward with those. So, some of these will turn into further discussions even if we don't have funding for them yet.
And, and Vice Mayor, um, Mayor Kup, that's why it's still, as I consider, a high priority during our evaluation with City Engineer and Public Works Director. And, of course, if you look at slide number twenty-six, you know, even though some of these under the, the tier are medium or low, if City Council decide to review and evaluate and decide to combine some of the smaller project and ship them up to the priority, the higher priority, that also an option as well. Um, but we should want to, to share with you of how, um, what kind of method that we use because, you know, these projects, of course, um, if we be able to fund them all, that would be an ideal because, um, but, of course, it's based on our, um, that capacity and affordability that the city can, can afford to do so.
Sure.
Yes.
But I see under high you have the Grandin Court Recreation Center, and you have small improvement scale. And then, under low, you have full renovation.
Yes, Katie, um, would you like to answer that question?
You need to, yeah.
Yeah, Katie Slusha is our, um, um, planning and development coordinator for Port Center. And so, she's very familiar with this project, so she would share with you better than us.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's some more urgent repairs. It's a historic school, as I'm sure you're aware, so, very old building. So, um, we're looking into some of the more urgent repairs in terms of roofing, maybe window replacement. So, that's that smaller dollar, more urgent, um, amount. But, when we think about, you know, putting a sizable investment in, then we also have to consider, you know, does it really make sense to do a full renovation rather than kind of piecemeal it in that way? So, that's the larger full renovation cost is sort of, um, it's less urgent in terms of, you know, kind of, uh, pressing issues, but, uh, again, kind of thinking holistically.
Is it, at, at, at some point, will it be beneficial to look at, uh, uh, building a new, uh, finding a new building? Than staying where you're at?
So, that particular site, it's very small within the neighborhood.
It's similar to Preston, size-wise.
A little smaller.
I would say smaller, yeah.
I've been in in years, that's why I was trying to, what has been done to.
So, I think, you know, th, this is one of the bigger questions that we really need to kind of set some intentions on of whether we're trying to maintain more of these smaller neighborhood recreation centers that are more accessible within the neighborhood, you know, they definitely serve a great purpose. That after-school program is, um, in very high demand. Or do we focus on creating fewer kind of larger recreation facilities, um, that we're anticipating people will travel from other parts of the city to visit? So, um, that, that was a lot of kind of the balance that we were looking at, right? It, we can renovate those smaller ones, several of those, for the cost that it would take to do another Eureka-scale project. So, I, I think in that neighborhood, um, that small center, there's a lot of rentals for baby showers, birthdays, that sort of thing. Um, and the after-school program, again, in very high demand. So, I, I think it's really serving a purpose there and is in high use as, even as a smaller, older facility.
Okay.
What, what department are you, you in finance?
No, I'm in Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
Katie, Katie is, um, thankfully, um, here working as, Katie's actually managing all of the, um, all of the programming and development projects that are going on in parks. So, think of the Instron Kayak Park, the Eureka Recreation Park, the Washington Park Pool, what else? Fishburne, I'm trying to remember what else I'm missing. So, Katie's actually the one that's managing all of those programs for us through design and then ultimately will be there through construction. She's busy.
I'm busy, yeah.
Thank you, Katie. If you don't have any, uh, further question, I can give, give the floor back to Bob so he can continue the remaining of presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're rounding the, uh, the home stretch, but we got a couple, couple of big items still remaining, so. So, one of, um, back when we started the discussion of the budget with the Budget Planning Retreat, one of the items we asked and talked about is any anticipated change in the tax rate because, obviously, as you know, it takes us months to get to the point at which we're at now. Um, and there was no indication of that at that point. We similarly asked that question or raised that discussion question at the January revenue. Um, so, the reassessment items that Casey presented, as well as our, Jason's first presentation of, of revenues. Again, there was no indication of any change, but you all did ask that we come back at this briefing and actually share with you what that looks like, what those impacts would be, um, what those changes. So, that's what I'm going to walk you through, um, here and give you, um, just a couple of different, um, pieces of information, um, with that. So, what we've, what we've identified, um, so the graph that is on the right is we had, we were sharing with you on the blue, so when you look above, that is the value of, um, a one-cent increase and a two-cent increase in the tax rate. If you look below the line, that is the, the value of a one-cent decrease and a two-cent decrease. For simplicity purposes, one cent in either direction equates to about one-point-one million dollars. That's basically what, what it equates to in year one. What the graph is also showing is, over the course of five years, what that one million dollars turns into. Because it's not just one million dollars off each year because as values increase, that reduction or addition is worth more. So, as an example, what, what is in one year worth one million dollars at the end of five years would be worth seven million dollars. So, basically, if you took, um, one penny off the tax rate, this year it's about a million-one less. Five years out, the value of that would altogether be about seven million dollars because it incrementally increases, um, through there, up or down, down. Um, remember too, that that million-point-one, though, is divided between the city and the school based on the formula. And so, for that one penny reduction, that million dollars, that one-point-one million, that is about four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, four-hundred dollars more or less for schools, depending on which way you go. And then, six-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, six-hundred more or less for the city. And, and again, the chart on the, the chart on the left just shows how that one penny equivalent increases over time, the value of it, and then also shows how the, the division between the school share and the city share increases, um, with time. A few examples of what this means, I just grabbed a few different things. So, on a, um, a hundred thousand dollars, so a hundred thousand dollar value, um, going from one-point-two-two, our current tax rate, to one-point-two-one, um, equates to a, a difference of about ten dollars, um, is, is what that ends up being on the, on the tax bill. To go to one-point-two-oh on a hundred thousand dollars, that's about twenty dollars. Um, again, that's on a hundred thousand. If I take the average house, and so this is a little distorted, but I think it is distorted probably on the side that would show more impact, so just so you know. So, if I take what Zillow lists as the average home price, so this is the average price of a home that's sold, um, or has been, has been selling recently. So, in Roanoke, in the city of Roanoke, that's two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, twenty-six dollars. So, average price of a house that has sold recently, to go, um, down one penny, that equates to about a twenty-six-dollar savings. To go down two pennies, it's about a fifty-one-dollar savings. I also, um, did some estimates on the majority of our homes, of course, are not owner-occupied. They're actually renter-owned. And so, obviously, renters won't benefit directly from, from this at all. Um, but you can associate, obviously, that same value basically to the, to the landowner, to the, to the landlord, um, effectively. So, um, you know, I pulled one, for example, a house that was, a rental property that was worth a hundred-and-seventeen thousand, um, you know, it's same, same roughly twenty, twenty-two dollars is what the annual savings would be per, per penny reduced. Um, also, though, remember, our tax rate applies to, um, commercial properties too, not just residential properties. So, I pulled a few of those. So, um, if, for example, um, the value of that penny reduction to Sam's, for example, is about a thousand dollars a year, um, one penny would reduce their tax bill by about a thousand dollars, two pennies by about two thousand dollars. Um, CVS, as an example, a penny would be about two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars, two pennies about six-hundred dollars. So, that's the savings that they would realize. I also pulled, um, let's see if I can find where that one is. I pulled the District View Apartments, also as kind of a, maybe a bit of an extreme example. And I don't think I have that one, that was a forty-two million dollar, that's a, yeah, there it is. So, the District View Apartments out on Orange, um, so there's a forty-two million dollar assessed value on that property. Um, so, for, for them, a penny would result in about forty-two hundred dollars, um, lower on their tax bill. Two pennies would be about eighty-four hundred dollars. Now, just for reference, the rents in that building run between twelve hundred dollars and thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, so, those are the rents that are being charged. Obviously, I don't, I would project that a four-thousand-dollar savings on their tax bill is not going to result in a change on those, um, on those rental rates. But, that, that is just to give you a sense both of what the impact would be up or down to the city and to the school with any change. And then also what that really means to both the owner of, um, a home as well as the, um, the landlord that owns a home, as well as some of the commercial properties that, that own a home. And there's a lot of variances because, obviously, people that are elderly, that are on fixed incomes have the ability to qualify for certain benefits, veterans qualify for certain benefits. There are certain homes that have their rate burden lowered if they actually are part of our renovation program in the city. So, those numbers I'm giving you aren't applicable equally because there are different adjustments that can be made, um, by folks through the Commissioner of Revenue and, um, and others. But, so I certainly wanted to present this to you. Um, again, as I mentioned at the beginning, the budget that we've been discussing up to this point presumes that the rate remains the same, does not presume it goes up nor it goes down. Um, I will say that I've looked at, um, I've talked to a couple of you about this. I've, I've watched as budgets are bidding. as budgets are bidding, being submitted by jurisdictions around us and around the state, and they're all over the place. There are jurisdictions such as Charlottesville that is actually proposing a two-cent increase in their tax rate. There are jurisdictions such as Lynchburg that are proposing it flat, and there are jurisdictions such as Roanoke County that's proposing a two-cent decrease. So they're all proposing different things, really for different reasons. Charlottesville is doing their increase, and they're also increasing on their personal property and some others. They're doing increases because they're trying to increase some compensation items within their jurisdiction. Roanoke County is decreasing, this is the second year that they're trying to decrease their rate. Lynchburg is holding level because they decreased their tax rate significantly last year, so they're trying to hold steady. Now, I will say Lynchburg has also level, is proposing to level fund their schools. So they're providing no additional funding to their schools year over year in order to meet that ability to not increase their taxes associated with it. Montgomery County is increasing, proposing to increase their tax rate. And I think those are the ones that I know that have been submitted. Salem has not submitted their budget yet. Potata County has not submitted their budget yet, so not sure exactly where they're landing. But that just gives you a sense of, I wish I could say there was kind of a consistent pattern across those others, there's not. They're, understandably, they're responding to their particular needs. They're not just kind of defaulting. All of them, all of those jurisdictions are experiencing the same growth as we are, if not more, in their real estate. Franklin County, should mention Franklin County is proposing to lower their tax rate. Franklin County does a four-year assessment, and their assessments were extraordinarily high because of their increasing property values that are there. And so they are decreasing. They're not decreasing down to the level that would offset that increase, but they're decreasing to a certain, or at least they're proposing to with it. So I'll stop there and entertain any questions that you all might have or any additional information that you would want to know.
So you were saying, I think you mentioned this before, our real estate tax or our assessments and the revenue we get from that is kind of tied into compensation?
No, that was in Charlottesville.
Oh, okay.
The example I was giving with Charlottesville actually is proposing to increase their real estate tax by two cents. And that was specifically in their case because they're trying to address some compensation needs that they have. So no, I mean, obviously, you know, if you looked at our $11 million in compensation, you know, that's of course coming from these sources of revenue, but I would not make a direct association with them.
Oh, okay.
Real estate is definitely one of those things I depend on for compensation increases because it's steady. But, you know, we also depend on sales tax and other kinds of things to foot the bill, if you will.
So if we were to look to decrease, even though it's a small amount, what type of services would we be looking to offhand?
Yeah, what I would do is, so we're $1 million out right now. So of those things that I started sharing with you, or that Cory walked through, that were those kind of departmental requests, external agencies, those kinds of things, I've got to reduce those by a million just to balance even with the current tax rate.
Right, that's obvious.
So if you took, if there was another, say, $600,000 out of there, I would look to those same things. I would try not to impact compensation and instead impact those new supplemental requests that are being put forward. Probably in order, the way we would do it, is we would probably start with the external agencies, and we would probably default those back to current year, the ones that aren't formula-driven. So the ones that are discretionary, we would say no growth, they're going back to the current year. That's not going to close that gap, but that's where we would start. Next in line, I'd probably go to one-time departmental requests. Those tend to be, well, I'll use the fire department, the replacement for the ballistic vests. Those would be one-time requests, those kinds of things would come off of the list. Then if there was still a need after that, then I would look at the recurring items. So those would be recurring items that the department has requested. Those might be the, like, new people that were added, for example, or something, to cover, I'll use the parks examples, as, you know, two new people to get ready for the upcoming pools. We'd probably say we would defer that for another year, and then we would, we'd start to hire those in the subsequent year, but we would defer putting them in the budget this year. So in order, that's what I would kind of go through in order to balance it. We're going to do the same thing just to get in balance currently. If we had less revenue, we would certainly do that with it also. And again, with the goal being try to keep the compensation dollars not impacted.
Mayor?
Yeah, that's how I would do it.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple, I guess, just observations. I know that assessed valuations, we've seen trend up significantly. I think three years ago it was 2.2%, then it jumped to 9.7% and then 9.9%, which is comparable to other areas. And I don't recall from the real estate presentation in January what we were anticipating in terms of those trends. Are those, are we going to see, because a lot of it depends on inventory?
Yeah, I think the expectation is that, you know, as Jason said on some of the other areas, all things being equal, we would expect values to continue to increase in the community, but at a lower and slower rate. Interest, I mean, by design, interest rates going up are supposed to be cooling the market, and they certainly are across the country. But that is also driven by supply, and we have very little supply in this community. And so I think our, I think our numbers are still going to be a bit stickier, that they'll still go because the supply is so tight. However, I do think obviously that the higher interest rates certainly are slowing and damping that to some degree. And I think that's going to be true in Potata, Roanoke County, all the others. I think everybody's going to continue to see growth, just slower growth. Franklin County probably continues to be the exception because Franklin County's growth is happening predominantly around the lake, and those homes are not in that same market as what we're talking about. They're usually second homes, retirement homes, those kinds of things.
I know our current rate has been such since 2015. And prior to that, I think our lowest rate in the last 40 years has been $1.19, which was from '06 to 2015. And I know that we've seen different valuations and costs over that period of time. So some of the dynamic here is providing, the question about providing some relief, which as you've said, will for many people be $10, $20. In the big picture, that's looking at maybe $1 million over the course of time, over the next five years. I guess one of my questions is, if we were to decide to reduce the real estate tax rate one cent, and I think Lynchburg is dealing with this somewhat, maybe other localities, then what do we need to be thinking about? If we reduce, what do we need to be thinking about down the road if we need to increase that again? What are the consequences? What are the risks involved?
Yeah, I mean, and there's probably, I'll give you sort of technical answers, and then there's probably political answers with that also. So the technical answers, and one of the reasons why we're showing you kind of this cumulative impact is because there's just this assumption that if you lower the tax rate so that you take $1 million off, it's $1 million. And it is that year. But again, assuming that property values continue to increase, that tax rate reduction continues to be worth more each year as it goes along. So one of the consequences are if somewhere down the line, a council decided to turn that back on and actually start it back up, that's just lost revenue. You've lost that revenue from that, you know, during that period of time. So that's one technical. The other technical piece is you can change that tax rate during a budget discussions, just like we are now at any point in time. So technically, it's very easy in Virginia to actually adjust that tax rate up or down. Again, you're seeing that in Charlottesville, you're seeing that in Montgomery County. They're increasing it this year based on their needs. Politically is where it becomes challenging. I mean, you've, you know, whoever is sitting up there at that time is, you know, often you're accused of increasing the taxes or the tax rate when it really is the assessment. In this case, it really would be actually increasing the tax rate if some council down the line. So politically, you just have to be prepared to deal with that piece of it, which is, obviously politically, it's often more favorable to be viewed as reducing the tax rate than it is increasing the tax rate, understandably. You know, sometimes you can soften that because it's being increased for a particular reason. That's what Charlottesville's doing. I mean, again, there, but I suspect that Charlottesville will be dealing with much of the same political fallout of trying to increase taxes, even though they're being very clear of why they're doing so. So it's probably, it's probably not a technical issue as much as it is a political issue when you get to that, when whatever council gets to that point.
Thank you.
Well, two, three of us wouldn't have to worry about that too far down the road. At least two of us, I don't know.
I know when we were looking at the zoning reforms, and I was reading some of the articles and some of the reports that I was online looking at, it mentioned, and it was over my head, it mentioned somewhere, some places were looking at the increase on land versus just like what's on the land.
Yeah, so there's a, so there is both a value for land and a value for improvements in Roanoke and everywhere in Virginia. So when you look at, when Casey presents his information, inside that calculation is there's a certain amount of the value that goes into the tax bill that's associated just with the land, wherever you are. So land in downtown is worth more than land on an edge of the city, for example. And then the improvements on top of that land are also valued in a different way. Couple of legislative sessions ago, Virginia authorized those to be treated differently from a tax rate standpoint. I think there may only be one jurisdiction in Virginia, and I don't remember who it is, that actually does that. And, but you could, and it's usually done as a way in which, typically what you see is, you see the value of land increased, and you may offset that with the value of improvements. And the idea is to take vacant land that people are just sitting on because they don't pay anything in taxes because it's just land. Parking lots in downtown are a great example of that, where surface parking lots, you're only paying, you're paying more than just the land because there's a commercial operation going on too, but nothing like you would if there was a building on it. And so if you change the value of that land, the theory is it stimulates their interest in turning it, selling it to someone or turning it into development. There are a couple of states, Vermont is one of those, that does this pretty consistently, but there are very few of those. And again, I'm only aware of one community, and I can find out who that is in Virginia that's done it. And that's really what's the reason, because, and ultimately, the goal is if you put more of those vacant lots into production, then the tax burden on everybody else starts to decrease. And that's the ultimate goal.
Is that something that the city should be considering?
Well, Councilmember Pretty has raised that a couple of times as something maybe that...
I remember you talked about it from the state level at the legislature.
Yeah, and I think, you know, his indication was, wow, that's going to take quite a bit of conversation. But certainly, that's something, if, you know, the council wants to have that conversation, we can certainly set the stage to start talking about it.
I think it's worth looking at, especially when we're looking at trying to increase revenues. If that is one way to look at increasing land value, especially like you said, land that the investors just sat on instead of doing something with, it opens up opportunities to increase the outcoffers.
Yeah, the, one of the challenges is...
It's always a challenge.
I know. And, you know, the way it's structured, so the way we actually value land is it's, there's a certain amount of uniformity to it. So like, you'll value like the downtown district. So you don't actually go in and value like Campbell Street versus Church Street. Now, you would in some areas, but, so one of the challenges that as we have that conversation, we would want to kind of explore further is you're not only affecting the land value of the vacant land, you're also affecting the land value of everybody else in that district or that area.
Right, right.
Now, if you offset it enough with the improvement piece, they may not feel an impact. But that's a piece of what would be a part of that consideration. But yeah, we absolutely can begin that discussion.
I guess I'm looking at the impact in the residential districts where you've got a lot of vacant land where investors just buy it and they just sit on it and nothing is being done with it.
And the reality is, you've got somebody who is sitting there paying a couple hundred dollars on a piece of property when the rest of the property owners are paying what they're paying. And if that property were put into, you know, if enough of those properties were put into productive use, then the burden on those other folks in theory actually lowers.
Yeah.
And again, it takes a lot of development for that to actually happen, but that certainly is the theory behind it.
Yeah, because you've got to start somewhere.
Yeah. But yeah, we can absolutely, you know, include that as a future discussion.
I'd just be interested, I think it's something worth pursuing and reviewing, since it's an option or two that's available.
Yeah, I'll find out. I just can't remember who it is, but I'll find out in Virginia who.
I was trying to remember, because I read, when I, like I said, when I was reading on it, that's where I came up with that.
Yeah. All right, so absent any further discussion, we're making the assumption at this point, well, let me add one more thing to this. So we will be very shortly, likely in the next day or two, we will be issuing our mandatory advertisement for the tax rate and the public hearings coming up on the budget. So we will do as we have done in the past, which is advertise at the maximum rate that can be adopted. That doesn't mean that that's the rate that will be adopted, it will be the, that's what will be advertised. We will though, however, unless I hear otherwise, we will be, I will be preparing the budget that I present to you all, assuming the tax rate remains the same. And then at that point, I'll hand it over to you all, and then it's yours to sort of deal with at that point and stuff. But, all right, very good. Thank you. I believe we've got one last section here to cover.
Thank you for your patience. One, a couple more slides, and it's a little surprising this time of year where it's the fiscal 2023 year-end review. As most of you may remember from the past, it's usually around February or so when we bring this forward, but because some of the audit issues that many of you are aware of with the GRTC audit and putting that together, we're late this year. I will say that I believe everything was uploaded to the Federal Clearing House last week as far as our final audit numbers and all of that. So we are complete at this point, had partner signatures. So we thought we would review with you. There is no action required by you today. That will be whether Mr. Cowell includes it in his budget presentation or a separate item, we will bring this back to you. So this is just a review of those items that we would propose, including in the year-end. But here's a quick review. As you see, the overall, we had about a little over $11.5 million, both from surpluses of revenue and expenditures in the 23 budget. A couple of items we want to, and there'll be a slide after this, to say, there's been some, we have to make some additional contributions into some of our reserves to meet policy. And you'll see $440,000 in the Budget Stabilization Reserve, Restricted Fund Balance, $230,000, which is kind of minimal, and then the Unrestricted Fund Balance of about $750,000. Two, as we say, would leave us with about $10 million, $10.2 million. Just as a quick overview for you to understand the, to make, or not understand, but to reflect on how we do this at year-end. Because of the year-end funds, the schools do get their additional contribution based on the formula percentage of $3.6 million. And to meet our reserve policy levels, we need to maintain an unassigned general fund reserve at a minimum of 12%. At the end of '23, our amount was 12.61, so we're slightly above that. And the Budget Stabilization Reserve needs to be at a minimum of 3, and we are currently at 3.55%. So we are, I guess the message is there, we are at or above our policy requirements for reserve requirements. And then as you look through, and I'll pause for a minute, and Mr. Cowell may want to come into some of these as well. But these are the items, well, we go back, you know, a little bit. I wanted to make sure we understood that, you know, why did we have an $11 million fund balance? I think on the expenditure side, everyone was very careful, especially as inflationary increases took effect, took hold. But also, I would say that our revenue surplus was pretty healthy, mainly because of very conservative revenue estimates as we, 15 months or so before, as we were anticipating how the, I guess the economy was going to respond to COVID and the ARPA funds that were put into the, into the overall economy in the country. And quite frankly, the good news is, as many of our economically-driven revenues responded very well. And if I just go through '23 real quick, we had a $2.2 million above budget for personal property. Our B-pole tax had about $800,000 above our budget amount. Transient occupancy, $1.2 million, as you've seen reflected through our additional contribution to this, I keep wanting to say CBB, Virginia's Visit, Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge. The motor vehicle is personal property, about $700,000 for the old decal fee, we call it licensing fee now. And the prepared food and beverages is about $3.4 million. So I think Jason responded to that. That has been tremendously resilient and beneficial to us. And then we had $4 million of interest income that we've talked about repeatedly. So all in all, that was a very good year for revenues. I would say that there is no indication that '24 will have that kind of amount. You know, our approach is always to be conservative. And then, as you see here, it mainly comes in at year-end, we can, some of those things we deferred. So I will see if there's any comments or questions about what's proposed, and if Mr. Cowell has anything he'd like to point out.
Don't wait quickly before any questions, I just want to sort of explain what's on this list. So when you, when you started, and we've kind of arranged it this way on purpose, so when you started looking at the lists and you look at all the overtime components, so that's overtime, we've already... that's overtime we've already earned, so that's already overtime that is spent that we need to cover using the year end. Just so everybody understands kind of how that works, if, if we were six months into the year and it did not look like we were going to have a surplus, well, we would then start reining back in on expenses, we would start reining back in on things like overtime and say, you know, we've got to figure out a different way to approach this. Once we know there's going to be dollars to cover those costs, then, then we proceed. But those are costs already spent. So everything you see on overtime is already spent, and we come out of the surplus. The curb gutters, sidewalks, and the street pavement is, which we've talked about in the past, what that allows us to do is work further down the list. You know, we have a list of projects, we get as far as the money will let us, if we add another million, it moves further down the list for, for those. Capital contingency, those are the dollars we set aside for change orders or other kinds of cost increases associated with capital projects. Utilities are costing more as the rates go up on utilities for us in our homes, they go up for us in our buildings also, and, and we're actually bringing more buildings online. So those costs have gone up. Stormwater management, capital reserve, same kind of thing in terms of money that is set aside for any kind of increase associated with projects. DSS costs continue to go up with private day school costs.
What is private day school?
So those are areas where they're the, and I'm going to get in trouble here because Angie didn't have to answer this question better than I am, so, but there are areas where by direction, we have to actually place youth into certain programs that we have to cover. Some of that's reimbursed with the state, some of it's not. Angie, you want to give more, better explanation?
I mean, I think you nailed it. I mean, I don't know what more, what's a specific question.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what day school is, private day school.
There are some youth who have been identified who cannot go to public school, that we need to find day treatment for them, whether that is physical or mental reasons associated with disability, that we need to provide them with therapeutic or a different type of schooling.
Okay, I know, they have some...
What kind of numbers do we have in that?
It's more than you think. I don't know, I mean, I could get you those numbers, but I don't have those handy, but I could get you those numbers. It's a pretty significant number.
And they tended to increase.
The cost continued to increase.
Yes, I would like to say when I was at Franklin County, we, you know, that was five, six years ago, big increases, and I think it has been continuing to increase, and it's been one of the largest items, I think expenditure items that have grown over the last five, six, seven years.
So what will we be trying to do to meet that type of challenge? This is increasing. What are we going to be looking at to try to underline that, to bring that down?
I mean, this is across the Commonwealth, and I'm sure across the nation. As everyone struggles to do this, there's just limited providers to provide this. I mean, there's, there's really not any other options, other than more facilities opening up for more competition for...
And I think even as our costs increase, I think schools are experiencing some of the same increases, even, these are folks that can't be placed in the schools, but individuals that are in the schools that have other kinds of needs similar to these, they actually experience those same kind of increasing costs. And, yeah, it really is just, it is a continually increasing expense, again, some of which the state covers, some of which they do not cover. And I think Angie's answer about competitions, where getting more people, providing these services is what's key.
May I ask a point of clarification? Why is that covered by DSS and not by city schools?
Well, it's, they have to go through a different type of program. I mean, that, that would be something that, that we would pay, and the state would reimburse a certain percentage.
Is that court or...
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
Yeah, there are, there is an equivalent to this inside the schools for youth that are able to be in the schools but need different kinds of accommodations, and the schools definitely absorb those, those costs. Matter of fact, I think, you know, I know when Kathleen's given presentations before, that's also one of their significantly increasing costs with it. But for those that actually are unable to be in the schools, it ends up on our, on the DSS side of the ledger.
I think about city of public schools, we take the ball.
City schools pay a little share.
Okay.
Give me an example of the kind of student you're putting in. What, child can't get along or have...
Maybe. I mean, it could be, it could be that type of, of challenge in the schools, but it could be other, other types of youth who are maybe severely, have severe disabilities that, that could not participate in schools.
That autism?
Not, I mean, not necessarily, no.
Okay, I just want to know, because sometimes you have, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Sometimes you have parents coming to us about their child's not there, and I don't know what they're talking about, other than the alternative school and the regular schools that we have or school down at, down over in Baratot, but so, okay, this is new to me, I didn't realize.
Yeah, we can, and we can give you a little more information on this, and we can talk with Gwen about getting some additional information that we can get to you all, so you have a better sense of what this program is and entails, especially because it is, I mean, as Kathleen said, the schools are paying a local share, we're paying a share, the state's paying a share, and all three of those shares are going up on a pretty regular basis.
I'm just trying to get my head around the criteria of what brings a child from DSS into private day school.
Yeah, it's, it's very, it's very complex, it's very comprehensive. And we can, I can get Gwen to identify some scenarios to provide you all, yeah.
That's what I'm looking for, that helps me.
Because it's, it's a long process that, that goes into that, and each situation is very unique.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have one more question, Mr. Mayor, I can't, I was about to ask your question. On the fleet and snow equipment repairs, since we're outsourcing, are we going to have, is this for like, for the salting machines or...
Yeah, that's, that's one of those, the question I was earlier about what costs will we start avoiding? This would be one of those costs we would start avoiding. We still have it at this moment.
We still have it now, but it would be, okay.
Of course, if it, if it never snows again, we'll be avoiding all these costs, I guess. We can't, we can't assume that that's going to be the case.
Okay, so we have it for now, okay.
Yeah, and then, you know, others on this list include, we've got police vehicles that are, that get damaged or totaled during the course of business, along with fire EMS. I mean, for example, we had, not very long ago, we had an ambulance that was involved in a head-on collision where somebody came across the line and hit him, so we have to replace those, those vehicles. This, this money actually allows us, is allowing us to buy those out of cycle. So normally, it takes us a few years to get one of those. This is allowing us to actually go find one that's already out on the market that we can do. In one instance, the other instance, I think, we're actually rebuilding one of the ones that was involved in an accident. Some technology improvements, after-school programs, so this is picking up the funding that we have historically, I think last year, we actually contracted for this service with the foundry. This will be funds that we'll actually be using in-house for our folks, but this is actually to allow us to continue to maintain and expand our after-school programs.
That's what I was, what I asked you was that.
Yep, and that's, and that's what, that one, you know, we already talked about the animal care and protection piece, there's an additional cost this year. The conference center walkway is, so we got in our capital program, the bridge, this is actually the walkway from the end of the bridge to the conference center. So that, that piece of infrastructure needs to be, the roof needs to be replaced, the concrete needs to be redone, and that's what this item is.
Now, do you have anywhere, am I missing it, with the improvements you need to do over on the pedestrian bridge, Martin Luther King Bridge you talked about?
Yes, that's in, I believe, that's in our unmet capital needs, is that right? That's on that, on that list. So yes, there, there are items on, on that list with...
It's on the unmet, okay, I didn't know if it was...
And that's true for the pedestrian bridge that's connecting to this also. Both of those projects are on the CIP list, but on the unmet list.
So you may look at your unmet list and use some of the surplus money.
Yeah, that'd be a really good example of how if a surplus, surplus happened again, we can look at that unmet list and see if there are things we can pull off of that.
Definitely, because I was over there a couple of weeks ago, and I could see what it was really getting bad.
Structurally, it'll be fine forever, it just gives a really uneven traveling surface and so on, so, yeah. And then the, the last few things on there are very small items, but important items like fireworks for, for Independence Day, and, and then our land bank fees for the city attorney that just helps offset the limited cost of things that they need to do in order to move properties from the tax rolls into the land bank. So these are, this is how we're intending to use the surplus. We're not asking for action, that won't, that will come probably in May, I think we're thinking, as we kind of finish everything in terms of the audit and those kinds of things, and then that's when we will be asking for actions.
Just a clarification for me, on slide 30, when you're showing...
Wrong way.
So I'm just trying to understand, is this surplus after the, the portion to the schools and VBR, or does this include? And my reason for that is if our surplus is 11.6 million and we're taking out 3 million for the schools, then that year-end surplus number would be smaller, so...
As I understand it, the surplus that is for the VBR and the surplus that went to the schools is before this, this number.
Correct, it's in those expenditure and revenue.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and matter of fact, that, those funds for the school have already been sent to the schools.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll be back with this in, in May, and then, you want to go to the last slide? I'm not going to come back up there, I'll just do it here.
Oh, too far, I'm sorry.
That one, yep. So next, next, first, thank you, thank you all, because I know that was a lot of information and a lot of things as we try to bring this thing, this thing in for a landing. So we will be in the next couple of days sending the legal ad off for printing. It will publish either, or it will publish both April and April 9th is our, is our target. We have to publish two different pieces two, two different times. That will ultimately lead us to a public hearing on the recommended budget and tax rate on the 25th, and that's because on the 15th is when I'll actually deliver the budget at your, at your meeting. We are all scheduled for individual or two, two at a time meetings on the 16th, 17th, and 18th. So then 25th will be the public hearing, and May 6th will be the, the final workshop for you all that will come after the public hearing, after you've had a couple of weeks to review the, the budget, and after we've had our individual meetings. And then, of course, May 13th is the adoption date for the budget, as well as all the associated ordinances, the pay ordinances, and fee schedules and all of those kinds of things as well. That's, that is what remains in the, the course of, of the year for the budget. Be happy to answer any last questions that you might have, otherwise we are complete without briefing.
All right, another question.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks, Finance Department and Brett, your folks. Thank you all. If there is no further business, then the council will be in recess for a closed meeting and will reconvene at 2:00 P.M. Thank you.